We have to check and make sure if the food is gone enough, then it's.
Welcome to the planning board meeting of April 18th. If you join us in the central agents' place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order of business is welcome to our newest member, Michael Aspao. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thanks to our outgoing member Carol Perna, who gave us four solid years of dedicated work. We will miss her. The next order of business, as we always do after an election, reorganization. So first to the chair, start with my left. Do you have any nominations for new chairperson?
Yes, I nominate a member LaRue to be our new leader.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any other nominations? Hearing none. Have a motion to close the nominations for the chair?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Seven zero zero unanimous.
Thank you.
Here, why don't we juggle seats.
Congratulations, you have our sympathy.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you all very much. I appreciate your confidence in me. I hope it can live up to your high expectations. Do I have a nomination for vice chair?
Yes, I nominate, if I may, Member Pembah.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing none, I will close the, let's close the, I need a motion to close the public hearing on this.
So believed. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we put to, I need a motion for vice chair.
No, for clerk.
Oh, we closed the public hearing. We didn't vote. We actually have to vote on vice chair.
I move the voter on the nomination.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So are we gonna wait and move at the end?
Yeah.
Okay. And now I'll be looking for nominations for clerk.
I nominated.
I'm sorry?
Oh.
You nominated Ernie Cavino?
Jack has nominated Ernie Cavino.
Thank you. I appreciate your confidence in me, but I would prefer not to.
Are there any other nominations for clerk?
I'd like to nominate our newest member, Mike Aspao, so he gets a feel for what's going on, sitting right up front there.
Is there a second?
Shall we ask?
He doesn't have a choice.
It's been moved and seconded. I need a motion. Are there any other motions for the position of clerk? Seeing none, I will move to, someone please move to close the public hearing.
Make motion to close nominations.
Nominations?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now I'm looking for a motion for someone to make to appoint Mike Aspao as our clerk.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
He didn't bring a gun.
We need to start moving chairs around now.
All right.
Thank you.
So Mike, you'll move here on my right.
Okay. Well, to learn, I think.
Yes, when you, when you collect money and you don't get enough, you have to throw in what happens.
You're like the strong arm.
They've got you there.
Did you bring a book?
Nope, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your patience, everyone.
You need to pass Mike Aspao.
Jack. Wait a second. That's what I was trying to do.
All right.
Oh, I see what they've done.
Just give me my name back. I don't need that thing.
That'll have to do for now.
That's fine.
Let me fix this.
Barbara.
We know what's changed.
It's not important.
That's what's important.
We'll figure it out.
Exactly. All right, next on our agenda is citizens' time. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one, we will move on. Announcements?
Now it's been zoning by the review committee. We'll meet next Wednesday evening at 6:00 PM. They will, at that meeting, be discussing one of the warrant articles that you have on your meeting tonight for the small cell wireless communications amendment in Article eight at that meeting. And they may have other items on their agenda.
Do you know where that is, please?
It's in the Town Hall Annex Basement Meeting Room.
The Annex?
Yep. Second, the...
Seven o'clock, I assume?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Thank you, I missed that.
The Historic Commission is holding an open house at the museum, which is the little white building across from Simons Park that they, well, have recently restored, restored about 10 years ago, and it looks great. They'll be holding an open house Saturday, May 4th, from 11:00 to 3:00. The best place to park is probably at Simons Park across the street. There's very little parking. There's like two spots at the museum. May Town Meeting will be May 13th at 7:30 in Burlington High School. I don't yet have a sense of how long the warrant is for May. And lastly, we have been discussing, holding an event, just a get-together event for Carol. We don't have a date yet, but looking to schedule something in early May, so just we'll let people know if they wanna come thank her for her services on the planning board. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Could I just, I just want to add, I know there's really no spot in here for it, but I, I know the chairman had done this, but I just wanna thank Carol for her service. I thought she was just, you know, she was very professional. She, she was dedicated, honest, and she conducted herself in this position to the highest degree, so.
A solid member.
Really was.
Agreed. I think everyone agrees. Yes.
Thank you for that. Yep.
Okay, we have no legal notices or non-approval, so we'll move on to item six, administrative matters. Six A, a discussion, an application for approval of a minor engineering change. 131 Cambridge Street, 131 Cambridge Street LLC is the applicant. Welcome. And even though we know who you are, please state your names for the record.
Thomas Murphy, representing the applicant, and this is Joe Pandolfo, who's the general contractor handling the construction part.
Thank you.
And we have filed an application with a handful of minor engineering changes. Items that Joe came across during the construction phase that needs to be tweaked or approved, in his opinion, in certain cases. And so just before the board, hopefully to get the board's approval.
Okay.
I can walk through them if you'd like. I know you all have the application in front of you.
If you could walk, just quickly, that would be great. Thank you.
There is a...
We're getting there.
Thank you, Tom.
In a total of eight of them, they're all being redlined and submitted. Going from the top, number one is a, this is a general item. That's basically the top floor of the building. Relevant to the discussion, this is in the town center district, excuse is allowed. I would submit that one of the, I think they envisioned at the time we passed that is to have this type of a use where there's some retail office below and residential above. The applicant has determined that with the size of the space, it really wasn't going to be a, very good for an office, size-wise, but it would make a nice residential unit. Has some underground parking, carpet parking inside. So he thought it would be a better use, both from his standpoint as a landlord and he thinks by, as far as the site is going, it's deserved. So that's one. There's a... Number three, exterior building site item. The ground level of the building facing Cambridge Street was designed to have a high retaining wall. After Joe got out on the, on the site and started working it, he came to the determination that there was no need for the wall, and he regraded the property accordingly.
Can I interrupt? Do these numbers on the plan correspond to some numbers somewhere else on the plan, or?
I submitted a cover letter with the...
Okay.
It was attached to the application.
I don't have those in your books. I did have them in the, in the stock.
Go with Attorney Murphy's good description.
So basically, it's, what I'm saying is what's spelled out there, just for a vantage for each of the items.
Thank you. Yeah, I would...
So number three was a change to the front, where there used to be a retaining wall. And Joe took it out, installed some windows, and from an aesthetic standpoint, it makes the building look better. Number four, he needed to provide space for a generator, which required a retaining wall and a poured concrete pad. That's shown as number four on the, on the plan. Number five, the electric power could only be supplied to the building by means of a pad-mounted transformer with protection bollards. This took up part of the parking space. It's shown as number five in the back corner of the parking area. So he had to shift some of the parking spaces down a little bit to provide for that. Number six, the original plan had no means for rubbish disposal on the original site plan, so he proposed to put it where number, item six is marked on the plan, with a 10-by-10 dumpster pad. Feels that that was a good spot for a truck to get in and out of there. Number seven, he tweaked the walkway a little bit, the one that comes from the street down to the, alongside the parking area, from the side door. He brought it out to where the sidewalk should be adjacent to the parking lot, so that people leaving their car don't have to walk through the, through the parking area to get to the front door. And...
Go over that one again, Tom. Sorry.
Yeah, the previous, the original site plan had a sidewalk essentially going from the front of the building on the Cambridge Street side, down through the grassy area over to the entrance on the left-hand side of the building at the parking area. Joe kinda swerved that down, so it goes adjacent to the, the parking area, so somebody exiting their car could just get on the sidewalk and walk along, rather than having to walk behind the cars to get over to the, the entrance area. That's marked as number seven on the, on the plan.
Thank you.
And number eight is adding one additional parking space in the area shown next to the number eight. They just had some extra space there and felt an extra parking space would be helpful. So that's the gist of the requested changes.
Am I correct in understanding that items one and two are not going to be discussed tonight, the residential area?
I, it was part of the application. I...
If I may. So it was part of the application. The, the top floor, if they just do the top floor, it would fall under the accessory dwelling unit, which actually doesn't need to come before this board. There was some talk of having the, using the second floor as two more units, and this site being in the town center allows for one, two, and three family unit configurations, and then this would be a mixed use with three fam, if they did the second floor, three family. However, we've determined, kind of going through, we haven't done this before, because we haven't had this request in the town center, but going through the process of review, that they, if they wanna do the, if they wanna do that for three units, they would need to submit a subsequent site plan application for this board to review. So that, I would recommend that we're not including the residential units. The single unit on the top doesn't need to come to this board. So really what this board is looking at today is the site changes that were discussed, other than number, number one, or any of the other residential components.
Okay. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, I spoke to Kristen earlier today, and so I understand there's a process that's being put in place for that, and so in the event the owner chooses to try that, we will obviously follow that process.
Okay, so we're not voting on that tonight, that's the three units, which, just all the other exterior changes?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Pardon me, Ernie?
The one unit doesn't have to come to you. You can, it's not. So otherwise, we're comfortable with the changes. We did wanna note that there show dumpster pad, but that it needs to be a fully enclosed dumpster enclosure, and that material needs to be approved by myself. The, all the red lines need to be incorporated into the plan. A reminder of the note on the original plan of the need for the brick banding behind the sidewalk, as the detailing on the site has been consistent with the other town center projects, as well as the, as was approved as part of the original, that the sidewalk along the front, frontage of Cambridge Street and coming into the site being vertical granite and cement and concrete. So other than that, we don't, our recommendation is to move forward unless any other members have comments.
Okay, thank you. Do we have comments from other, other?
So we have some public comments. Inspector Buildings favorable. DPW Engineering is, there are comments here, so I'll read those afterwards. Board of Health favorable. Conservation Commission favorable. So it looks like the engineering department are all the standard comments, just in relation to sizes of the pipes when there's water and the, and the flow of the Title V and all that. That's all very standard, so I...
They are standard.
Probably no reason for me to go through that at all.
That's right.
I assume they would have, Tom's probably seen that a million times already, as has Joe. And these look fairly standard, but they're, it's short, so I could read it if you'd like. This is the Department of Public Works, so. "All existing and/or proposed utilities should be clearly and accurately labeled, size, material, existing, proposed, rim, invert, etc., on the drawing reflecting the most updated utility connections and sizing. Provisions for the enclosed dumpster pad and dumpster should be depicted upon the plan sets. Long-term and perpetual care of the dumpster, including the emptying and the enclosure, will be the responsibility of the property owner." And the last one is "All handicapped parking signs must meet the requirements of Mass. General Law Part One, Title VII, Chapter 40, Section 22A, and clearly and legibly display the following message: Handicapped parking, special plate required. Unauthorized vehicles may be removed at owner's expense." So that was DPW's comments.
Joe, do you have any other questions? We might as well start with you, since you're already talking.
Nope. The only, the only question I noticed is an extra, an extra parking spot being put here. Was that the only, is that the only location it can go, or the additional spot, or?
Yeah, yes, that's the only spot, really.
That's the only place it can go.
It's available. I mean, I, the doctor asked, see, one of the issues in, speaking with the doctor, and speaking with some real estate people, one of the issues you have with medical is even though the zoning calls for a certain amount of parking spaces, you can meet the zoning, but you usually need more than that. So we feel that if he puts commercial upstairs on the top floor and on the third floor, right, he's not gonna have enough spaces for himself. There's 26 parking spaces on the site. So to me, and I've been trying to push him towards this for a while, he, I'd like to see him go residential. Number one is because the entrance to this building's right there with those other condos, so it would be much less of a use, and I think it would be better, his wife's gonna operate on the lowest level. She's a doctor as well, so she's gonna do healthcare, a weight loss clinic and stuff. She took additional schooling for that. And he's gonna be on the second floor, his whole office, and then that's really enough for that area, I think. And so that's why we're, we're just figuring we'd be better off for the top two floors. So if he can get an additional parking space, there's, there's lots of real estate people telling me there's buildings in town that they can't rent for medical, because even though there's sufficient parking spaces per regulations, the doctors won't take the space, because they know there's, they're gonna, there's not enough parking for them and their patients are gonna be upset. So that's kinda what's driving this a little bit, too. And, and, you know, just where that area is, it's, you know.
So that's, that's, that was my only question, really.
Yes, I just had a question. Have some of these changes been already made? Because you were talking about they went from a wall to a grade and so forth. And one thing that when I first came on the board, people used to make all kinds of changes without ever contacting the, the staff, and it was just, well, we made the change and you have to approve it. And so I, did they contact you for, for these changes?
I will, I will definitely vouch for Joe Pandolfo calls us when there's a change and comes in and has a little drawing and a picture always. It's been great.
Actually, can I add just one to that, Paul? Actually, he did, I remember contacting, but on top of that, it's what he actually did, was what we asked the architect to do, and the architect insisted it couldn't be done. And so when Pandolfo Company went out there and they saw it, they said, no, actually, it's a better plan than what they proposed, because they were...
Well, if I could just expand on that. For some reason, out in front of the sidewalk, they, they were gonna put a six-foot retaining wall, which would cover that, the smaller windows there. It made no sense. Why, it would look horrible, number one, from Cambridge Street. Number two is that unit there would have no windows, so how are they gonna rent it, only have windows facing the parking lot? And so it was, I mean, it just didn't make any sense.
Well, we appreciate that, because we know that there are changes to almost every plan. I mean, we have a plan, but we did have a problem. People were doing major changes without contacting the planning board and letting them know. So I said, everybody's got a cellphone, and so we just asked the developers, anybody who's working on our project, that if you wanna make a change, just pick up and call the office and let them know, so that we can get it on the plan. And they, if they have any questions, they can go out and look at it before it's approved.
Yeah, most of the other changes were, they didn't have a choice. There was, they, they said the power is gonna come from the two poles of there. Those two pole, telephone poles are full. Power had to go on a transformer pad, so they didn't do enough investigation beforehand to figure everything out, and that's why everything's taken so long. But everything's going pretty well now.
Thank you.
And it's actually, it used to be commended, because it was literally what we wanted.
Right, I remember we talked about that.
When that's landscaped.
He couldn't do it, and then when Joe looked at it.
When that's landscaped, that's gonna look nice up front there.
Right, it'll look, it'll look beautiful, yeah.
Jack?
Yeah, how are you going to soundproof the, the generator there? That's not residential abutting that, on that side, is it?
No, it's a kinder care.
Kinda daycare.
Okay. This is, some of these new generators have soundproofing built into them. Sometimes you have to put some type of a sound buffer around them. How, how do you plan to deal with the sound on that?
Well, first of all, the location's a great location, because it's opposite of where the residential condos are. It's in the back corner. It's hidden behind the, do you have it on the plan where it, where it's shown?
Yeah, but it's up against the hard wall.
It's up against the, the building, so it's gonna be tucked in there, so it's gonna be very easy to enclose that for soundproofing.
But a generator, or something that makes noises, if it's up against a hard wall, that reverberates and the sound goes out. So I'm just wondering, how are you gonna attenuate that if, if it's not soundproofed itself?
But what are we trying to protect, though? The kinder care?
No, that was, that was the question. It's not next to...
Oh, the woods are in the back.
So it's, it's not as much of a problem to me, but generally, there are, you know, some noise standards and...
Yeah, no, we, we'll do what we have to do to, if there's a, if there's a problem, we'll, we would fix it, but I don't anticipate it. The generators they have now are much quieter. They're not, it's not gonna be a very big, it's not gonna be the generators, they're very small generators, because we're gonna put, each unit would have, we're only gonna put two, and they're much smaller. They're like a house generator. They're not like these big commercial ones you see. Oh, they're small generators.
Gas? Natural gas?
Natural gas.
Okay, they're quieter. All right. Thank you.
Ernie?
No, just, kinder care, is kinder care higher or lower? There's a retaining wall right there, isn't there?
All right, so...
Or am I thinking the wrong side?
So that's another issue, which, there's been so many issues. That space, that space between the property and that wall is owned by kinder care. That 29 feet is owned by kinder care. They never maintained it.
Outside of their wall, you mean?
That wall. As that wall drops down.
Yep.
That area, they only, the dental bill only has seven feet, okay? All that space is kinder care. So I had to go to kinder care to get permission for them to clean it up. The problem we're gonna have now is, who's gonna maintain that? Otherwise, it's gonna be all weeds and everything. In addition to that, their, their drainage system was designed to come out of all those holes in that wall. Yes.
Wasn't there a house there, Joe?
Pardon me?
Wasn't there a house there one day?
Yes, but it flooded the backyard of a house, and it didn't make any difference. Now, when it rains, a river comes out of there. I don't know why the drainage was ever designed like that, but that's, that's how it was. It come out of those four-inch holes along the wall.
I thought there was an infiltration system somewhere on kinder care, and that was the overflow?
I don't know. They're, they're good people, so what I'm gonna try to do to them is talk to them and see, because the doctor does, the doctor, it looks like the doctor's property, so if that isn't maintained and kept up nicely, it's gonna distract from the doctor's building. So that's the next thing I'm gonna do. I gotta talk to them.
I remembered actually talking to them about that when they were in here, when the house was there, and I, whether it's written down or not, they agreed to maintain that.
Who did?
Twenty-nine feet kinder care.
Oh, okay.
Because of the house that still, was still there. I don't, you know, after the house went away, maybe they went away, or I'm not sure what happened, but...
Well, I don't think they'll have any problem cutting it and stuff. The question would be, do they wanna pay to properly seed it and everything? And all along their walls should be all stone put in along there.
Right, where it kept up.
It really floods, it's a river when it, so, but we'll work, I'll work it out with them.
Right. Well, thank you.
Maybe staff could pull that plan from, for kinder care and see what they agreed to do and check into the drainage as well, so we can reach out with them, to them and make sure that they're fulfilling their end.
Thank you.
Yeah, that would be good. Thank you. Paul, sir, Ernie?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, this, this concerns me just from the get-go with the guy to the residential, because we spent a lot of time on this, and Attorney Murphy tends to recall that we talked about residential here. We, I don't recall that at all. I mean, the, the plans we had for the interior completely showed off as base. If, if we had a residential or planning to put residential there, I would have taken a look at that a little bit differently. So that, that's my first concern. Second one, I think with, with Paul says, changes to this, again, we looked at materials, we looked at windows, what they look like. Now we're adding a couple of different windows, and I'm not sure who, who approved what the windows look like, or how many there were, or what their locations were. We spent a lot of time on that, on this building. Again, we had a lot of discussions about entrances, what the building's gonna look like. So these changes, to me, are not necessarily all that minor. Thirdly, with the additional parking space, there's a lot of discussion about green space, a number of parking spaces now, just inhale, let's just have one. I have concern about that as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mike?
I have no comments, Madam Chair.
I have a question. The additional parking space, is that because you're losing a space in the back where the electrical is, or you just needed an additional?
Just trying to get one additional space.
Okay.
But what happens to that space in the back? It's got bollards in it now.
We slid it down.
Oh, you slid everything? Okay.
So we... It took up a little bit of that space, so, because you have to maintain four feet all the way around the transformer. Bumped it out a little downward the, with the dumpsters going.
Okay, so you're gonna give us a new plan showing the new placement?
Well, it's marked, it's marked on that red line, but we'll, we'll follow.
Okay.
So I, I share Bill's concern regarding the loss of green space. It's not so much that we begrudge you the extra space. It's that we don't like to lose the green space that was going to be landscaped, and it was something we had all talked about, making it look really nice. And I wonder if it might make sense to leave that as grass and have it there in...
Reserved.
In reserve. Thank you, Ernie. If the, if you find that the doctor is needing more parking, it can always be added later, but I think in the, until we... I think in the, until we prove that he actually needs that space, it might be nice to leave it green.
Well, one of the things, I think, too, if it becomes residential, then that's going to be less of a concern.
That's true. Right. We're not voting on that tonight, but if it becomes residential, you wouldn't need the extra space, and then we would certainly want to keep that green and maybe put a tree there.
If I could just mention, though, about the windows on the front of the building, it's the same exact window. Everything's, we didn't change the elevation at all as far as the type of window. It's the same window, but it's a little bit shorter because of the grade, and it's lined up right underneath.
Who decided that?
We...
The board or the staff or... So that's a 3A kind of coverage, right, in the whole plan, so?
So when Joe came in a year ago, I know we talked quite a long time about when you were looking at the building, and I can't, Joe, anyway. When you came in and we discussed it, what we reviewed was what the board had wanted during the...
In the first place.
The first iteration. And I know, Joe, you had come in at that time, and we talked about the door, not the door. And I don't remember if you guys, anyway. But it was definitely in the direction of what the board had ultimately wanted in the original discussion. So...
It was the grade, it was brought to the grade that we argued to get...
Right.
Beginning. And they realized, when he looked at it, he said, no, it should be that way. It'll look better. So if you were to bring the grade down and remove that retaining wall, you're going to be looking at basically just a flat wall. Or you can incorporate windows, which would make it...
So if you approved the windows and what they look like and the location, then that was fine?
Yep.
That's all I'm saying. We have a 3A that's...
Right, no, we had the discussion.
The problem is that retaining wall would have been right up against the sidewalk.
I'm good, I'm good. I just wanted a 3A kind of subcommittee member to approve what, where they were placed, what they look like versus, you know, it done half-passed lean after the fact.
Yep. I was actually, I went in the office a couple times. We looked at it and actually were really happy that it ended up...
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I think we might be ready to have a vote on this. Now, this, again, we're not voting on the residential. This is just on the other exterior changes.
You want a motion?
I do.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the request for minor engineering change for property located at 131 Cambridge Street to modify the grading along Cambridge Street, install concrete pads for a transformer, natural gas generator and dumpster, modify the parking layout and walkway layout as reflected on the red line site plan entitled "Site Plan in Burlington, Mass., prepared by PJF and Associates dated February 4th, 2014, redlined to March 29th, 2019, consisting of one sheet, subject to the following revisions, terms and conditions as printed."
As amended.
As amended. Thank you.
All right. It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, our next matter is item 7A. May I have a motion, please?
Can I interrupt you quickly? Of course. I just wanted to highlight that Member Espio is, these are, most of what is after this are items that Member Espio, that were ongoing, so has not been part of the discussion. And just wanted, for the record, for the chairman to decide, you know, do you want the member to stay at the table with you? Do you want them to sit in the audience? It's a decision of the chair. And also just remind the applicants as you're announcing, depending on if Member Espio is still sitting here, just remind the applicants as you announce the item that there's only six of the members that are able to participate, so.
Unless Member Espio objects, I would like to have him stay and listen and learn. Although he can't vote, I think it would be great to have him here. And I will remind the applicants that we have a six-member board voting tonight.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to, for the record, kind of figure that out before we started. Thank you.
Madam Chair, are there any Mullen forms that need to be signed or Dawson this, or is everyone eligible as is?
I have just, I have received all of the Mullen, the Joe and Member, and Pemba and Member Gaffney were the only two that had to have Mullen's forms, and we all have them in...
Sure, all up to date on that.
All in hand, so there are six members that are eligible to vote on the remaining matters on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I would like a motion to take item 7A, B and C together for discussion purposes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven to zero.
Six, six to zero. Just, oh, six to zero, sorry. Thank you.
Item 7A is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 4.2.5.10, automobile dealership, which may include integrated structured parking of the zoning bylaws, 64 Cambridge Street, Herb Chambers Cambridge Street LLC is the applicant. Item 7B is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 64 Cambridge Street, Herb Chambers Cambridge Street LLC is the applicant. And item 7C is a continued discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 62 Cambridge Street Herb Chambers Street LLC is the applicant. Welcome and...
I would ask everyone to be sure you use your microphones. I've just gotten a text from somebody that they're having a hard time hearing us.
Oh.
So make sure you're...
Thank you.
What'd you say?
He got a text from somebody who said they can't hear us.
I've done that.
Thank you. Welcome. And if you could, please state your names for the record.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, Attorney Mark Vaughn with Reiman Broadstein representing the applicant, Chris Barages, who is the civil engineer of record for the project, so.
Thank you. And as you heard, there will be six members voting tonight on this matter.
Yeah, I think for the time being, we would like to proceed, but appreciate your reflection. And also, congratulations on, for you and Mr. Pemba on your ascendancy to Chair and Vice-Chair respectively. Condolences, whatever you want.
Thank you.
I'll call it ascendancy, okay.
So I had just had a very brief presentation, if I could, Madam Chair. As you know, we've been at this for a while, obviously, since the fall when we had submitted the applications. And I think all the issues have been thoroughly discussed and reviewed, but just, we had a brief, very brief presentation at the outset. I think at the last meeting, if you recall, there was discussion regarding kind of the remaining topic of trade-in vehicles and the ability for the dealership to offer for sale off-brand trade-ins that come in in the normal business operation. As we stated before, it's customary at all dealerships, and while most off-brand trade-ins are not kept on-site, there are, most are sent off to auction or whatnot. There are some that are deemed suitable enough that would stay on the property for resale. It's not a large amount, as we indicated before. For the present operation of the audience, about 13 to 14 percent of their total inventory is comprised of that off-brand trade, but nonetheless, it's a critical component. So recognizing that we were at a bit of an impasse on that subject, we did submit a request for zoning interpretation to the building inspector, Andrew Ungerson, asking for, as building inspector, he's also zoning enforcement officer, asking for interpretation on that. I know the board had also submitted a communication to him as well, offering a different point of view on that subject. After reviewing the material, the building inspector did issue a letter dated March 19th indicating that his interpretation is that the sale of trade, traded-in used motor vehicles other than that of the brand name of the dealership would be permitted. So notwithstanding that, and if you recall, even before communicating with the building inspector on that subject, we did, in the spirit of cooperation, provide a condition with regards to the Porsche dealership whereby we would agree to limit any off-brand trade-in vehicles offered for sale to luxury vehicles only, which, as I understand, in your draft decision has been defined. And furthermore, we would offer to limit the total amount of off-brand inventory to no more than 15 percent of the total inventory of the dealership. Again, we had offered that in the spirit of cooperation, and although we don't feel presently it's required based upon the interpretation as provided by the building inspector, we still agree to that provision. So I, and again, I know we've been at this for a while. You've all put a significant amount of time, effort, energy and planning staff and different departments and all that. And, you know, I feel like we have a very, very good project, ready to proceed. I think it's consistent with what town meeting, I know it's consistent with what town meeting it revised last year. I just wanted to highlight some of the plan modifications, just to, I know it's been several weeks since we've been before you, but helpful just to touch upon a few of the plan changes that we have made based upon your input. If you recall, we had modified the access plan to reflect a modified car carrier access configuration for the main site drive for Porsche. So even though the existing car carrier activity takes place on 62, the board wanted comfort to know that if indeed the two dealerships needed to operate separately, that car carriers could come on to the 64 Cambridge Street property, the Porsche lot, if you would, and be able to service that without impacting anything on the main road. And that was revised, those plans have been submitted as reflected. And you recall, I think we spent an entire meeting maybe on that subject matter at some point. So if you, also, we, pursuant to the board's request, we reduced the height of all the parking lot lighting in front of the dealership to be more, I forget the exact height we're at now, but it's lower than what we originally had proposed to be consistent with a request from the board. I think Member Pemba had made that request. The landscaping plan that you see here is an accurate representation of what we would be building out. A lot of discussion had taken place in the landscaping. We had added a number of new deciduous plantings, red maple trees along the frontage of the site. It's a very robust plan. If you recall, we had walked the site as well with Kristen Kastner and identified some mature plantings that we committed to relocate elsewhere on the property, either on the 64 Cambridge Street property or even on the 62 Cambridge Street property. And the plans that have been submitted, the landscaping plan, all reflects that. And in fact, we now have a net increase in the number of plantings that are out there from what exists today versus what's proposed. And on that same subject, we did commit to doing those plantings in front as part of the first phase of construction, so that the board knows that, recognizing that the appearance was important, we would do that as a initial phase to make sure that landscaping is in place. I'm not sure when we were before you, before, whether we had the final approval from the Conservation Commission, but we do have that. We had submitted a notice of intent to them. They approved that. They're comfortable with the drainage design, and there are some, you know, stormwater upgrades that would result from this project as well. One other item I did want to mention is that we had presented the board with an action plan to address service volume activity at the dealership. And if you recall, we had both Casey Rickenberg, who's Executive Service Director for Herb Chambers Companies, and Adnan Zahovik, who is the General Manager of Audi, both of whom were here tonight, again, by the way, at a prior meeting, talking about their commitment to make sure that vehicles are parked in the requisite spaces as shown in the plan, and to properly assure that service activities are controlled and monitored appropriately. We're committed to that. I understand that the draft decision that the board has also takes those action plan items and puts them in the form of conditions, so. And lastly, with respect to the special permit criteria and our compliance with same, we did submit a detailed set of findings to the board back in December, itemizing the special permit criteria and how we satisfy those. I have additional copies of that if the board would like to have, so. So I guess in closing, I know this has been a bit of an awkward process, going back a year, right? So I know the board did recommend unfavorably on the bylaw change to town meeting. However, town meeting did vote pretty overwhelmingly to support it. I know in the past, when this has happened, the board traditionally has agreed to, you know, honor the will of the legislative body. I know, for example, with Mercedes, I use as an example where I think, Madam Chair, I think you and Member Raymond did not vote necessarily initially for the rezoning, but ultimately, it was unanimous vote for the special permit itself.
Actually, no, I voted against the Mercedes dealership. But in any case, we all know what town meeting voted, so we don't need you to review that. I do think it's important to note that town meeting did approve the zoning request, but town meeting does not have to consider the same things that this board has to consider. Town meeting was not looking at a site plan. They weren't looking at traffic plans. They weren't looking at all the other things that we have to consider when we consider a special permit. So while we, of course, respect town meeting's decision, we are required to look at it in a different way. So thank you for the introduction.
Just, before I finish, if I could, just the, the last thing I would want to note is, I don't, well, not the last thing, I don't believe there's been any opposition to the project either that's been stated of record, and I thought that was important. I think, you know, people that have been weighing in on this have indicated support, so. And I know that, you know, without Board Member Perna being here, we are with a six-member board. And I think we talked about this at the prior meeting where we ended up continuing because of a lack of a full board. But I think the last thing we would want to do is have to withdraw and reapply. I don't think anyone is interested in having to start the process over again. So our preference would be to go forward and hopefully reach a point where, before the hearing is closed, at least five of you are in a position to support the project. If not, and it looks like we would need to continue and re-advertise, then I think that's something that we would need to consider at that time. But appreciate your time, and I sincerely mean that. I know a lot of you have put significant time and effort into this, so thank you.
Thank you. Staff, if you could give us your comments, and if you could also, when you do that, explain to us what the building inspector's decision means and what obligations that places on us, if any.
So we are very fortunate to have someone in the room who could explain it a lot more eloquently than I on that second matter. On the first matter, I actually don't have that many new comments. I've commented quite a bit on the project and the landscaping and literally walked the site plant by plant to make sure what, we understood what was staying, what was moving, and where it was moving to. So I do think that they have, with the landscape plan, with the turning radiance and the items that could help make the site work independently of each other, as well as the operational items and commitments that I think were definitely something of concern. But those have all been addressed in the decision. The decision is extensive, complex, includes quite a bit of, includes all the discussions, really, that we've had thus far. And with that, I don't have a bunch of new comments, and I will let Council, Adam Costa from, me and Talimran Costa, works with Lisa Mead, who we introduced at the last meeting, answer the second part of the question about the building inspector's letter to the planning board and kind of the different jurisdictions and powers and authorities and how that all works together. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, I'm Adam Costa. I've not been before your board previously, so nice to make all of your acquaintances. Lisa Mead couldn't be here today. She's on vacation with her daughter for school vacation week, so she sends her regards, but I got the duties tonight. So I understand that there's been this issue relative to interpretation of the bylaw and that there was a request made by the applicant as is a process that exists under the zoning act for any person, any resident or business owner, to make a request for a zoning interpretation by statute. The building inspector can provide such an interpretation, and that interpretation can be used by the applicant as justification that a use is allowed or disallowed, that certain requirements of your bylaw apply or don't apply. certain requirements of your bylaw apply or don't apply. It's my opinion that that determination is not of binding effect on your planning board, it's not of binding effect on your zoning board, it's not of binding effect on the municipality as a whole. There's a doctrine that stands for that very proposition. So I've had circumstances in other communities where a building inspector renders a determination that a particular board just thinks is wrong, is inconsistent with their read of the zoning bylaw. And so based upon that read, with regard to whatever happens to be in that particular board's jurisdiction, whether it's a special permit or a site plan review, they will render a determination that might be inconsistent with the determination made by the building inspector. That's not to say you should entirely disregard the determination of the building inspector. It should be given appropriate weight, certainly in circumstances where that decision renders from the ZBA or the planning board that is inconsistent with what the building inspector has said, and that prompts an appeal. You can be sure that the applicant is going to use that particular interpretation to its advantage in the courtroom and claim, well, there's disagreement even internally within the governmental unit. Again, not determinative, doesn't determine the outcome of that litigation for certain, but it's something that should play a factor in your analysis, your review of the bylaw, your understanding of how the provisions came to be, what was intended by town meeting, what the plan language states, and then weigh that against whatever the building inspector has said in a given circumstance.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Jack, would you like to start us off?
I, if I can add or ask a little more about that. In the acting of building inspector's decision, he made reference to the Class 1 license, which is issued by the selectmen. Does the fact that a Class 1 license had been issued, does that in any way bind us as far as our interpretation of the zoning bylaw?
In my opinion, through you, Madam Chair, in my opinion, the answer to that is no. The licensed jurisdictions are separate and distinct from zoning, so there is a process whereby Class 1, Class 2, Class 3 licenses are required for the sale of everything from new to used to salvage vehicles. There are standards that exist under those licensed statutes as to what constitutes the sale of a vehicle, in what instances licenses are required, but that licensing scheme is separate and distinct from the zoning bylaw, which differs from community to community, unlike the licensing statutes, which are the same statewide.
So just because the license allows used cars without any specification, that doesn't mean the zoning overrides what the zoning bylaw states?
That would be my opinion, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. I don't think we need to go over stuff we've gone over for many, many meetings. I think it's a project I didn't like back before I was on the board, back in, what, 15 years ago, when some of you were members of the board when it was approved. I still don't like it, but town meeting said, fine, they should be able to build it. So I would agree that, you know, as much as I don't like it, I'm have to hold my nose and vote yes, but that doesn't mean I'm restricted from putting the normal reasonable conditions that we put on. So I would be looking to, as I say, hold my nose, vote yes, but make sure that we put the conditions that town meeting expects us to do on a site plan and a special permit.
Okay, thank you, Jack.
I have a different opinion, but that's what elections are about. And I must say, I respect the building inspector's decisions, but to me, the most important decisions fall with the elected members. And I can recall a bit back when the building inspector or our staff member made a decision that the board unanimously disagreed with. So, and I felt that it was appropriate that the board made the decision. People elect us to make decisions, and so that's very important to me. Let me just say, I have nothing against Herb Chambers. I do what Herb Chambers wants people to do. I have two cars that I bought new, and both of them, every time I walk by them, it says Herb Chambers on it. So I have, I have no problem with Herb Chambers. The dealership is there. It's not unusual for two different dealerships, really, to exist together, as that does now. And I really don't see any reason not to have that continue as it is. From what we heard, at some point along, the decision came from their corporate, which is in Germany, it's Volkswagen, and they said, we want the Audi and Porsche dealerships to be separate and in separate buildings and so forth. And to me, that was stated, I believe, at the meeting. And to me, one thing that's helped me along as I've worked with people and others, is that I try not to let somebody else's problem become my problem. And to me, that's, Herb Chambers, from what we can say, understand, didn't say, gee, wouldn't it be nice to have one more dealership? Because we already have, what, three? And so he said, well, we're gonna have, so to me, this is, in effect, a new dealership, really, because it's a new building, and I'm sure that the decisions were made where they were made, that this was going to increase the activity, it was going to increase the sales, and that section of our highways already is very, very busy. And if you don't believe it, come down at 5:00 at night on any weekday night. So from that standpoint, as I said, I feel that that decision was made somewhere else, and we're being asked to help the proponent to take care of their problem. I voted, let me just say, in something similar to this, and it's a basic tenet of mine, is that I don't like an increase in density that can't be done without extra maneuvers. I give you Mooney Road, which we approved, which was very dense, very congested, and when I asked them how they were going to build a house, they said they were going to go to the Board of Appeals and ask for a variance from 25 feet to 10 feet. And I voted against it for that reason. I think I was the only one that voted against it. As to town meeting, I was a town meeting member for 15 years, and have been active and brilliant in politics for many years, not only as a town meeting member, but I've been campaign chairman, treasurer, and everything else for other people. And I respect town meeting's vote, but I don't always agree with it. For instance, Herb Chambers, it wasn't Herb Chambers, it's the dealership now, but when the Mercedes came in, the decision was made to go to town meeting and ask them to amend a PDD that was like 15 years old, and they said, we want it attached to that PDD. I was opposed to that. I said, if town meeting, if you want, if you think this is good, you want to allow it, then have them ask for a rezoning, instead of a maneuver, which I thought was not the best way to do it. So I oppose, I oppose that. And there were other issues with town meeting, we had another one recently, a town meeting made a decision, and the property owner did not respect it. This board voted to support town meeting, and it went to court and so forth, and town meeting eventually did not back us up. So I appreciate town meeting, I was a very active town meeting member, but I don't always agree with the decision town meeting made. Another possibility that may happen is that, if I'm correct, after the Mercedes decision was made, that we received a letter from Herb Chambers saying that he was considering attaching a PDD to that for his Kia dealership. Is that, is that correct or not?
There was initial interest, there was no formal application.
Well, but the, he immediately made that, had that thought in his mind, to attach a PDD so he could expand that dealership. So that may, that may very well occur in the not-too-distant future. I wonder, did the condition that came to you to split that dealership require that the change would not allow the other dealership to be put somewhere else? In other words, did they say, you have to split Audi-Porsche, and they have to be side by side?
Is that a question?
Well, it's a question, is, is, is I want to know if part of their, their wanting to influence us, they say, well, that's, the decision was made not by us, but to us, to split the dealerships, and could they not take that Porsche and put it somewhere else? Or the other?
Yeah, I, if I could, through the chair, there is no other place in Burlington where you could do it, because...
Excuse me, that wasn't the question. The question was, was it required for them to put it somewhere? I know that would've, should've, could've, and, you know, could they find, does it have to be in Burlington, and so forth?
I can't answer whether it's...
There's nothing wrong to say, I don't know.
Porsche is telling the Herb Chambers companies that they need to be in a standalone building, to have a separate identity and a separate presence. And our intention is that this is the most logical location for it, because it's surrounded by highway off-ramps, and as a luxury dealership, it generates less traffic than what a traditional dealership would generate, and it seems to make the most sense to have it at this location as town meeting agreed as well.
Thank you. And I understand that, that is logical, but nonetheless, it's not a condition of what's before us that that dealership has to be there. I expressed, as soon as we started getting all the auto dealerships, that I did not look forward to having Cambridge Street be an auto mile. And to me, this is just another edge towards that. And there are other properties along there, there's a gas station, so forth, other things along Cambridge Street. The reason I voted, one of the reasons I voted against the Mercedes dealership initially was it's right across from residential area. And although this is in a more commercial section, nonetheless, there are residents around there and so forth. I did get strong presentations from a couple of residents that I vote in favor of this. And so out of respect for them, I am, I'm not going to vote in favor of it, but I won't vote against it. So I'm going to abstain. Thank you.
So first, as far as comments go, there are no additional comments. All the comments have been already stated in the past, so there's been nothing changed from that point in time. As far as my opinion on the item before us, I've stated my opinion on it in the past, and I'm not wavering from that. I feel like, you know, quite honestly, I don't want to see an auto mile either, but the dealership is there now. I feel like the, you know, what's before us at this point in time, quite honestly, is, will be less of an eyesore than what we're looking at, you know, with a sea of vehicles out there. More importantly, what has weighed on my decision is the fact that town meeting has spoken. I feel like, in my opinion, when town meeting makes a decision like that, I feel like it's incumbent on us to follow through on that and to make the best project that we possibly can out of it. I happen to feel that, quite honestly, with the type of dealership, I don't feel like it's that intense a use. I think if you were to get down there for three or four hours in a day and watch the traffic that goes everywhere there, I think it's fairly insignificant. So my thoughts on it are, you know, to split the dealership and to have two buildings, I don't, I think it's going to be a fairly insignificant increase in intensity down in that area. And on top of it, I think we're going to benefit by all those vehicles, for the most part, being placed inside. My concern, one of my concerns is that the landscaping is sufficient. Another of my concerns are that we don't have, we don't have used, it's a high-end dealership, that we don't have used vehicles being placed on pads and used vehicle signs on any vehicles on the outside. My preference would be that if there are any used vehicles that are going to be advertised on the vehicle itself, that those vehicles be placed inside the, inside the building. I don't have any problem with, you know, the new high-end vehicles being placed on those pads out there, but for the most part, I'd like to see most vehicles on the inside. You know, quite honestly, if there's going to be a use like that, I feel like it's, you know, the location that it is, I think, is pretty, pretty non-impactful to the town as far as the roadways and things like that. Again, one of the items I brought up in the past is that to make sure that, you know, when they take, when these things are test-driven, that they're not test-driven through the neighborhoods in Burlington, that they're test-driven up on the highway, and then they come back right off the highway and get right, right into the lot. So I think given the proximity of these buildings to the highway and to the off-ramps and on-ramps, I feel like there's going to be very little impact, you know, to the residential section of Burlington. For those reasons, and again, my first reason was town meeting's decision, for those reasons, I will be voting in favor of it.
Thank you, Joe. Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think just the only comments I had on the decision that was edited by someone, that we talked about last time, having the headlights shining out from the showroom, so I'd like to prohibit that versus trying to, I think someone wrote in there, trying to make the cars go in different directions so it doesn't shine out. If you've been in the showroom, you can see that they're all trying to face out, so if we can just kind of eliminate that versus try to maneuver the cars in any way, I think I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, I had them so they were not pointed out, but if you want to eliminate the headlights inside...
Yeah, so now you get into a discussion of, well, is it pointing out, not pointing out? And then, you know, any other external lighting, I think, I was not on the board with the Mercedes dealership, but as you, again, that's across from a resident, but you had kind of the light shining out, so if we can kind of prohibit any kind of any light shining out, you know, kind of muting that down a bit, I'd appreciate if there's some sort of language in there. In general, I'm going to, I agree with Joe that, you know, town meeting had spoken on that. I know a lot of people on the board here put a lot of time into, to look at how this site could meet those requirements with regard to the turning of the car carriers and things like that. I spent a lot of time on the landscaping, which we had issues with before. Again, I kind of take personal umbrage when we were talking about the people taking U-turns, and all of a sudden, I, I'm there, I've got folks U-turning right in front of me, so there's been a lack of kind of communication from the folks here in management to the actual folks who we have concerns. I think that's been a constant lack of communication down from management down to the folks that are actually there doing that stuff, you know, over the long period of time that we've been through all these. But just in general, with regard to town meeting approving this, the folks on here spending a lot of time being able to work that, and I would be voting in favor of it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Bill. Ernie?
I actually don't have a lot to say, because Joe and Bill just said it. But I would like to take the opportunity, since town council is here, to just ask him what the ramifications of a unsuccessful special permit vote is, and then obviously we can't proceed to the site plan. How would we proceed after, say, the, I'm looking at the, say, the site plan vote is unsuccessful? What happens then?
Through you, Madam Chair, if I may.
Please.
So are you asking about votes on the other, the other applications before the board, or are you asking about the ramifications of a denial or an effective denial by the board with regard to prospective litigation and review of the decision? Which of those questions are you going to ask?
I think your second.
I'll go both.
Both, yeah.
I would like to hear the answer to both.
Okay, so I think I can answer the first one relatively quickly, which is that every application stands on its own. So I've had many boards that have denied special permits, but they will review the site plan and determine that the site plan warrants approval based upon the design of the site. They're just not approving the use, and ultimately, the site plans have no benefit to them unless the special permit is appealed effectively and successfully. So there are a few ways that a board can vote, whether it's a five-member board or a seven-member board. You require a supermajority for a special permit. I've had instances where the vote is a simple majority, which is what I call an effective denial, because it has the effect of being a denial. Different boards handle that different ways. It's always my preference, and I'm going to sort of take off my consultant hat and put on my litigator hat, if I'm litigating a case like this and I'm defending the decision of the board, and I'm defending a denial, I would much prefer to defend an actual denial decision as opposed to an approval decision that has failed to get the requisite supermajority vote. Yes, we crafted this decision, we structured it to be an approval, but then it didn't get the vote, and so the justification for the denial doesn't actually find its way into the decision itself, because the decision is not a denial decision. That's challenging. I've had that happen from time to time. It's not the end-all, be-all, because reviews, as you probably know, of permitting decisions, any decision that renders under the zoning act, those reviews are what they call de novo in the courts. The courts look at them afresh and new, they take in all the The courts look at them afresh and new, they take in all the evidence, it's not a review on the record like it might be if it were a Conservation Commission review or a Board of Health review where the record is assembled of whatever happened before the Concom or the Board of Health, and that's what the court is restricted to in its review. The court opens the door to all the evidence being re-presented and looks at the case afresh. So there's that benefit. But nevertheless, the court will reflect back upon the ultimate decision of the board, and it makes my job easier if I've got a true denial, if that's ultimately how the board votes. My advice to boards when they're on the fence about a project is to remember the difference, and I say this because I think it's particularly relevant to what I have already heard some of the members say tonight, and I hope I'm not overstepping here, but you've got criteria for approval of a special permit since Section 9.2.4 of your zoning bylaw. You apply those in every instance where a special permit comes before your board. And those are the six criteria upon which a special permit should be approved or should be denied. Then there are sort of the ancillary questions, which are what are the appropriate conditions? And those conditions are either conditions that you craft on your own because they're necessary for the project to function the way that you wish for it to function, or conditions that you believe are necessitated based upon the language of the bylaw. Maybe that's that there's a provision in your general bylaws that deals with noise. And so you incorporate that into your decision, either by reference or by stating that there shall be no construction activity prior to 7:00 AM or after 7:00 PM, something like that. There are conditions like the one that we've already discussed tonight, which is this concept of off-brand vehicles on the site, how you interpret that provision. If your concerns are with the conditions, my recommendation is always, if you feel it meets the sixth criteria for approval with those conditions, your better approach, from a litigation perspective, in terms of me defending your decision, is always to approve the decision with those conditions. Conditions that address the other concerns you have, compliance with other bylaws, compliance with the zoning bylaw, incorporate those into conditions and approve it with those firm, strong conditions that I can then defend on appeal. That's always preferable to a denial. Denials are appropriate when those six criteria that are contained in Section 9.2.4 aren't satisfied. So if you have concerns about traffic flow and safety and those are justified, that's a basis for denial as opposed to approval with conditions. There are instances where you could approve it with conditions in such a way that the traffic flow and safety will be addressed. Happens often with projects, your consultant comes in and says, you need a stop sign at the entrance, you need, you need speed humps or speed bumps within the site. Those are conditions that address the traffic flow and safety, and so by incorporating those, you've checked off that box with respect to criteria number two. But that's really the question before the board. Can these six criteria be satisfied? If they can, and your concerns are with the other ancillary issues, condition the permit appropriately. That makes it easier to defend.
Thank you. And, oh, okay. Oh, you're going to ask him? I wasn't done. Do you want?
No.
Please, Ernie, please go ahead.
I saw you through.
Oh, okay. So that was a good segue for me, actually. I really go and look at the exact special permit conditions and really write out answers to those, which I think are questions. But I did in this case, and I'm not going to read them, although I have them. The one thing that is kind of helps weigh me to vote positively is I voted no also. It was a 7-0 decision to recommend to Town Meeting that this not be approved by Town Meeting. I was questioned by some of my friends and people who aren't even friends, just acquaintances, who are also Town Meeting members. Why did you vote no? Well, you know, we don't really need another car dealership there. And one of the replies, which sticks in my head, is so you'd rather have an empty parking lot paying, and I looked up the assessed value, paying $700,000 or assessed at $700,000 rather than two buildings, one of which is now assessed at $11 million. And if it's split, maybe it won't be that much, but the other building will be assessed pretty high too. So that's, that's an economic benefit to the town. This is Town Meeting member talking to me. And I said, well, what about, what about, you want another car dealership? And they said, there? Who's it going to bother? It's basically splitting one dealership, and so we shouldn't see an enormous increase in traffic if we see a small increase in traffic, they said. Okay, so, so that was, that was, that was one argument. But the biggest thing, and you know me, my fellow members know me, I'm the one who was always being reproached to the fact that zoning rests with Town Meeting. And I've, I get it, but in this case, Town Meeting on a vote of, and I looked it up, 67 in favor to 26 opposed, voted to allow this with special primary, special permit criteria. So in my opinion, as long as we conditioned it, as Adam said, our attorney, I forget your last name, I'm sorry, I'm calling your first name. As long as we condition it to protect the public, I believe it's my fiduciary responsibility to the people that elected me to vote in favor because there's no big negative about it, and there is a big economic positive. And since we had so much trouble with the landscaping in front of the parking lot and 62, at one of the subcommittee meetings, I directly asked them, can't you do the landscaping first so we don't run into this again? And they said, yeah, I guess we can. And it's in the permit that during the first phase of construction, they must do the landscaping. And I'm not sure what else we can do. So my vote would be yes anyways. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question for information, and that was this. They came to us a while back looking for that piece of property that is going to go on for storage, car storage and so forth, and we said no. They went to the Board of Appeals, which is, you know, that's the way our system works. And the Board of Appeals said yes, but they put some fairly heavy conditions on as far as, they said they did not want it to be visible from the street. Well, we did a lot of work on that and so forth. My question is this, if they do not get a favorable decision on this, do they still have the ability to take advantage of that vote that we gave them to store cars but with their landscaping and so forth?
Yes, because that's what's there today.
Yes, they do. Okay, no, I was just wondering. So I'm just saying, that is, the implication to me is it's not a total loss because they would still have the ability to use it for what they were going to use it for previously. But, thank you.
Okay, my turn.
Your turn.
I agree with Ernie that it's very important that we look at the special, the special permit criteria that we have to consider. And in a previous meeting, I did the same thing that Ernie did and explained why I felt the project failed based on what I was supposed to consider for special permit criteria, namely the first two. One was community need and one was traffic. And I'm not going to get into all the details because I discussed those in more detail at a previous meeting. I am cognizant of the fact that Town Meeting approved this, and it weighs heavily on me. However, as I stated before, Town Meeting did not have to vote on an additional curb cut on Cambridge Street close to a very busy intersection. Town Meeting didn't have to consider that we still have problems with car carriers stopping on Cambridge Street and unloading cars illegally, even though it's not the dealership's fault. I'm not saying that they could stop it, but it happens and it's very dangerous. Town Meeting doesn't have to consider the extra traffic and the U-turns and left-hand turns coming out of the street. So these are things that I have to consider that Town Meeting did not have to consider. And yet I'm struggling and I'm trying to find a way to come to a yes on this because I know that it's what this board, the majority of this board wants, and I believe that Town Meeting intended for it to go there. But I'm, I'm very torn. The way this is conditioned, because I can't remember, it's been a while since we got to some of the traffic discussions, is there a no left-hand turn here out of the building, out of the site?
It's a median divided.
So they have to take a right-hand turn?
They have to take a right.
So it's right in and right out?
Right in, right out, and there are a number of conditions reflecting the board's concern about U-turns, about test drives and specific routes and other items like that.
I saw that. On the test drive condition on page 10, it's saying that we want test drives to stay off of residential streets. I thought there was also discussions about test drives not going up to the town center, but it doesn't really look like that to me here.
You didn't want to drive around the common, as I recall.
Right, but that's not, I don't think that's in here. Well, it says, without the use of illegal turn movements on Mall Road, Cambridge Street to Town Center, but you could still drive up to the town center and not make an illegal U-turn.
Correct.
I don't want test drives going up to the town center.
I think it would be difficult to prohibit from on Cambridge Street, but if your issue is about some of the smaller streets at the town center, we can try to do that.
Around the common, for instance.
I don't want them going around the common.
Right.
You could put language in it.
Just meaning Cambridge Street is kind of the thoroughfare.
I think they, we had that discussion, right?
But it's not in here.
No, it shouldn't be in here. You're right. It shouldn't be. Because I know they did agree to it, right?
Yep. Okay.
So as I stated previously, I voted against the Mercedes dealership for the same reasons that I don't like this. I don't think that it serves a community need. I don't think we need more dealerships on Cambridge Street or anywhere else in town. And I do think they cause traffic problems. After the Mercedes dealership went in, and most people were in favor of that dealership before it went in, there were a lot of complaints about it afterwards, and there still are. A lot of people really dislike it. It shines bright lights into the neighborhood, there's problems with traffic, it's not safe for people turning in and out of there. So I never regretted my vote, but I was the only one, I think, that voted against it, or maybe Paul did too, it passed. I'm having a really hard time of this, with this one. I do not think that it is in Burlington's interest to place this here, and yet Town Meeting thinks it is. I think Town Meeting made a terrible mistake, but that is their right to do that. So I'm struggling a bit with this one.
You got to vote.
I know, I know. It's tough. So my first night as chair, and it's going to be a really tough one. Before I make my final decision, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Please come forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think the chairperson gets an extra $10 a week, so you get paid the big bucks. You have to take the pressure.
Yeah, the big bucks. Before you start, could you state your name just for the record? We know who you are, but.
Dan Tucci, Town Meeting member, precinct six.
Thank you.
I was one of the Town Meeting members that supported this. And let's just say I'm going to speak on my behalf because I won't want to speak on anybody else's behalf. I thought from the very, very beginning that this wasn't that big of an issue, and I'm, by the way, Paul, I'm very familiar with how that dealership got where it is today and what was previous. So I don't want to talk about anything that the planning board had supported or not supported, but just talk about today. I didn't think it was that big of a deal because it's an existing dealership right now, okay? They're not encroaching onto any other property that isn't property of their own. It's not really in the town center, it's not in the center, it's kind of like out of the way a little bit. I think that Town Meeting, when they voted to support the zoning, they listened to the presentation by the attorneys, they listened to the, to the planning board, you know, negative vote, they listened to everything. I think that the reason why they supported the rezoning is because they, they were familiar what, what, what they were going to get. Because the, the, the presentation showed the new building, it showed, you know, cars being parked underground, they saw an existing dealership that would now be able to operate, you know, independently of one another if, if it ever happens. I'm not sure what the future of the site is. But I think that this was, and this was like, for me, I couldn't find justification to not support it. There was a lot more involved in, in the Mercedes dealership, which, and I supported that, there was a lot more involved in, in the structuring of a planned development district between, you know, the planning board and the, and the Town Meeting. So if, if someone says to me, what would be the strongest reason to support this? Because I just think that it's, in my opinion, incidental. It's really incidental in what they're doing because there's still two brands being sold there. There's still a Porsche and there's still an Audi dealership there. It's not like there's a, I know how you, you want to look at it as another dealership. Maybe you're right, but I don't look at it as, as like a, like a, like a new, a new car dealer in town. And I, and I think, I think that Town Meeting members, and just on, on your comment, Madam Chair, I think there are Town Meeting members that, that, you know, that do understand the special permit process because they, 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 they want to know as much about special permit, and I'm not saying they all do.
No, I'm not, I did not mean to imply that they don't understand it. I was saying that they do not have to consider the same things I have to consider.
Correct, right. But then again, if they're familiar, if a Town Meeting member is familiar with the special permit process, then that alone means that I know what's going to be going before the planning board. I have a unique situation. I was before the planning board 33 years ago for a special permit for my business, okay? Fortunately, in my situation, I had the general business zoning, so I did, I just had to go right to the special permit process. So, you know, I didn't know anything about special permits at that time. Terri Zard was on vault, it was the town director at that time, and I was very fortunate because she really educated me into the special permit process. So again, I think that Town Meeting kind of looked at this as something not that important, it's already there, the planning board is going to make sure, and I'm serious, they feel that the planning board is going to make sure that they're going to impose whatever restrictions they need to impose, but without handcuffing the, the dealership conducting business in the way it's been conducted the last 15 years. Because, you know, I don't know whether or not this is something that people, I think dealerships, I, I don't think that dealerships are real eyebrows, eye raises. I mean, it's not like a restaurant or something where there's a liquor license or there's somebody conducting a business that has an entertainment license. I just don't think that it's overly significant, and I don't think that there's any negative impact in, in having that dealership and it's, and you're accommodating the owner. What you're doing is by allowing him to build a second building with the restrictions, I think it is an accommodation to an existing business that's been here. And I just want to know, let you know that's why.
Okay, thank you.
I thought it was a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I, I will say, and I know a lot of people have said that it's, there's two dealerships now, there'll be two dealerships moving forward. I don't believe that there's no impact because no one builds that much, spends that much money to build that building and not expect their profits to go up. That would just be unreasonable. It would be, from a business standpoint, it would be not smart. Anyway, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none. Any other board members that have anything to say? Yes, Jack?
If I may. Attorney Vaughn, I almost didn't catch it, but in part of your presentation, and I know you're doing your counting here and you're at four and a half.
We round up, right?
I don't know how to do that. You indicated that you might consider withdrawing and reapplying in order to make all seven members eligible.
I just didn't want to put the board through that.
I appreciate that. I don't want to, but it's your choice and you have to make that decision. So I'm wondering if, based upon the discussion you have heard here, if you have made a decision in that respect.
Before, I don't think Attorney Vaughn has to answer that question.
He doesn't have to, but.
Although I'm going to say something, and he will not answer the question after I say what I'm going to say. I think this is a, I think, I don't like this project. I think Town Meeting made a terrible mistake, but it's their mistake to make. So I will vote yes tonight. I'm not happy about it. I think Town Meeting may regret their decision, but I don't want to usurp their authority.
My question is not necessary. My four and a half is a bad count.
Motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Six-zero.
Oh, you want me to keep going?
Someone has to.
Well, I'll speak.
I won't.
Maybe not appropriate that I read it.
Thanks, Paul. No, you want me to read it? Okay. Motion to approve, am I in the right place here? Yes. Motion to approve the request of Herb Chambers, Cambridge Street, LLC for a special permit pursuant to the Burlington zoning law, Article 4, Section 4.2.5.10. for a special permit pursuant to the Burlington zoning law, Article four, Section 4.2.5.10, automobile dealerships, which may include integrated structured parking provided said use is located on a lot abutting an automobile dealership in use, automobile dealership use, existing as, as of the date of the adoption of this subsection 4.2.5.10, and provided the lot is located within 200 feet of Route 128 slash 95 highway or ramp layout, and at least 200 feet from the nearest one-family dwelling residential zoning district bounding. Any automobile dealership allowed pursuant to this Section 4.2.5.10, including the existing automobile dealership, shall be limited to a single brand at each location. Said lots comprising the existing and proposed automobile dealerships shall be deemed to be one for density regulations and parking purposes consistent with Section 5.2.0 note nine, to permit the separation of the existing Porsche Audi dealership on 62 Cambridge Street into separate dealerships, Porsche dealership at 64 Cambridge Street, and the Audi dealership on 62 Cambridge Street. Subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A.
Attached, attached, attached and amended.
As, attached and amended, right. We amended the.
The test drives around the.
Test drives around the car.
And the headlights.
And the headlights, right.
The headlights.
That's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Do you want any discussion?
I imagine you must have something to say, so discussion.
I do. I, I would ask counsel for the applicant, are you aware of the conditions that are in the decision?
Yes. I, I have seen the, the draft decision that was forwarded. We, we provided some commentary on it. But I, I, I am, I am aware of the conditions as they've been circulated, at least last week, yes.
And amended, because we're gonna make a couple of changes.
We just amended something on the, well.
And amended.
Yes. It was something they didn't object to, anyway.
He knows that it's in the draft and amended as of what tonight's discussion.
Now, I, I do understand that there's at least one part where you strongly disagree with the condition. And that is, and you're probably aware of, at least my interpretation of the zoning bylaw as passed by Town Meeting, which was authored by the applicant and presented by the applicant. My suggestion to you, based upon the condition dealing with the non-branded used cars, since the zoning bylaw was written by you, probably the most expedient way, the least expensive way to get a better answer or possible different outcome, is to go to the September Town Meeting and ask them to accept some clarifying language to that, that you might accept. They may or may not agree with you. But that certainly would be quicker than litigation. For you to contest that, you'd have to file an appeal, which would stop your building permit process. If you don't appeal it, you can get your building permit, and you can start building next month. And then you can put through a potential Town Meeting amendment. They may or may not agree with you. I know you feel that most car dealerships sell their trade-ins. But even going back to 15 years ago, when this dealership was approved, it was agreed then, and I was not on the board, but I paid attention, that this was not just any dealership. This was a special dealership, luxury cars. And the argument in favor of luxury cars was, they don't do the volume of business that a regular car dealership does. And because that was a very sensitive traffic location, that was part of what weighed on the decision to approve it, even though it was a slim approval. I still feel that it's a sensitive traffic area, and the luxury car only is what I think is the appropriate decision. I know you and I will disagree on the interpretation of that, and we're entitled to disagree in our interpretation. But I don't think we need to go through the list of facts, because we've done that. But, you know, that's just my suggestion as to how you might look at possibly dealing with our sincere, that significant difference.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And one other thing before we vote. I don't remember the name of the gentleman sitting to the right in the lovely purple tie. But before you leave, if you could give your contact information to our staff, because you're gonna be the one we call if there are traffic problems, or if we have car carriers stopped on Cambridge Street. Thank you.
That's Mr. Adnan Khashoggi.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Any other members? Any other discussion? Okay, I believe we have a motion, and it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
So that is five-zero-one. And I believe we have some more motions. Two more.
Public hearing is.
That was a special permit.
Yes.
Okay.
Looking for item B.
This is on the site plan. I make a motion to close the public hearing on the site plan matter.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That was, I'm sorry.
Anyone, any abstentions on the closing the public hearing? Six.
It's, yeah, six-zero. Sorry.
Make a motion to approve the site plan application of Herb Chambers, Cambridge Street, LLC, applicant and property owner, for property located at 64 Cambridge Street, to permit the construction of a Porsche dealership with structured parking and associated improvements as reflected on plans in the reports as listed below, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions. Any amendments to these?
Just the same ones as we previously discussed.
Okay, as revised.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So that's five-zero-one again. Your next motion is on page seventeen.
Seventeen?
With a minor engineering change.
Okay, this is not a public hearing. Okay. Motion to approve the request of Herb Chambers, Cambridge Street, LLC, for property located at 62 Cambridge Street premises, for a minor engineering change, to create an internal vehicular, vehicular connection to 64 Cambridge Street vehicle storage lot, as reflected on the plan entitled, site plan set entitled, Porsche Burlington, 64 Cambridge Street, Burlington, Mass., prepared by Williams &amp; Spargis, LLC, dated April 4, 2018, revised to January 9, 2019. Subject to the following terms and revisions. Anything they're changing?
Strike vehicle storage lot, and it's January 10. I apologize for that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
No, it's voted, so abstention would mean nothing.
So six-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time and your motion for the process over the past six months on this. And thank you Kristen and Josh as well for all your time. So, thank you.
It was like five years.
You can stop seeing a man skating tomorrow, Mark.
Man skating tomorrow, yeah.
Okay, let's move on. Item 7D is a continued public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article seven, Section 8.4.0, wireless communication facilities, to include small cell wireless facilities submitted by the planning board.
As a reminder, this item also was, was posted for the last meeting, so members favor is also, I'm not trying to exclude you, and I feel kind of like negatively, like you can't play too, but. Anyway, so this, following up on all the discussions with small cell wireless, or small cell wireless communications facilities. If you recall, at the last meeting, we approved the design rules and regulations.
Do we need Adam anymore?
I'm happy to stick around if you think that I might be needed. I'm here, my kids are asleep.
What time is it? I think mine are too.
It's eight forty.
Oh, yeah, I hope so. Let me just finish. I guess this.
I have a question, so I just assume you stay.
Okay. So, following up from the last meeting, when we approved the design rules and regulations that needed to be approved by the April 14 deadline, in connection with the application requirements and procedures that the Board of Selectmen had put together, two things followed those. The general bylaw update, as well as the zoning bylaw update, to give, to place these regulations and give teeth to these regulations identified from the authority in the zoning bylaws and the general bylaws for the planning board and the Board of Selectmen, to carry out the regulation of these wireless, small cell wireless facilities. So, that's what this is. It is not very long. It's direct, it's cut right into your staff report. So it's not very long. We worked again with Donna Brewer, who's attorney that's been helping us work through the language for small cell. And we would ask the, the planning board, this language has been placed in the warrant that has gone to print. So we would ask the planning board to support it. The same thing, I will say, with the rules and regulations that we approved at the design rules and regulations. This is an emerging technology. We do not have all the answers. We know there was a very limited amount of protections, and that the town could even have any authority over. So we wanted to make sure we put those in place, so we at least had as much control as was afforded to us under the FCC regulation. So, we have done that, and we have placed it in the zoning bylaw to give us kind of the, to lead us to the design rules and regulations. We're gonna learn a lot as the year and years goes on. They were set up that way, so the design rules and regulations can be opened by the planning board and modified as necessary as we learn where this technology is going and what it looks like. And hopefully, we've, we've heard from people that, you know, everything's getting smaller and more integrated, which is great news. But we wanna make sure, you know, we can put in there the, the most visual, visually pleasing, but most access of networks that can be achieved in Burlington. So, that's what this is. We would recommend approval, not approval, favor, recommendation to Town Meeting. And if anyone has any questions, I will attempt to answer them.
Did you read this into the, I wasn't paying attention.
You wanna read the text, the text in?
Well, item D, to continue public hearing and so forth.
She read, you read that in.
Yes, I didn't.
Okay. I wasn't paying attention. Thank you.
So, just for people who are watching here or at home, what the board is voting on is a recommendation to Town Meeting. This is actually going to be Town Meeting's decision ultimately in May.
Let's hope they make the right decision, Stacey. No, nothing.
All right, Ernie. You go. You can start us off.
I, I think this is, this is absolutely necessary to get us into being able to regulate what we can regulate with small, small cell. So I would, I would be looking to vote in favor of it, and it's kinda really short, so I can see what it says. It doesn't look like anything out of the usual for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ernie. Bill?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just one question I had on the language. The title, and then there's the second paragraph. It's titled Small Wireless Facilities. Should it say Small Cell Wireless Facilities, or just keeping it Small Wireless Facilities?
We, we have tried, have been trying to be consistent with the FCC language, so that's why. Small cell is kind of the, not slang, it's just kind of, small cell is what everyone talks about and understands. So it's a little bit of a hybrid, but the actual FCC guidelines doesn't actually have that exact language. So we just wanted to be consistent.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Joe?
No, I'm good.
I did participate in all of the meetings, and I just wanted to have great kudos to our planning director, who did an immense amount of work in preparing the documents, who had the foresight many months ago to see this coming, and get us prepared to act in a timely manner. Most communities were caught by surprise, and were not able to act in time for the deadline that the FCC imposed upon us. We did. So, thank you very much to Kristen and her staff for the work she did, and just seeing this coming, and preparing it for us, and giving us this information that we can act to give the town the best protection possible.
If we ever applauded our staff.
Great job. Before we go too far, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter?
Or applaud our staff.
Or applaud us. Okay. I have no questions, so I think we're ready to, for a motion.
Is this a public hearing?
Yes, it is.
Motion to close a public hearing. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Six-zero.
Motion to recommend favorably on the petition to amend the zoning bylaw, Article seven, Section eight.
Oh, it should be Article eight.
It should be Article eight.
Yep.
Section 8.4.0, wireless communications facilities, to include small, do you wanna say small cell wireless facilities, or do you wanna say what you said up here, small wireless facilities? Does it matter?
Sure.
Small wireless facilities.
We'll amend that.
Slash, small cell wireless facilities, submitted by the planning board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Six-zero. Thank you.
Wish they all were that fast.
No kidding. All right, our next item is item 7E, a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 6.1.1.1, alteration of a non-conforming use of the zoning bylaws, 336 Cambridge Street. Lynn Shue? Shu, thank you, is the applicant. Thank you.
To the previous question about counsel, did Paul mention there was a, was there a question on, on which item and?
No, it was a question about the open, the open reading bylaw. And it was this, if you want.
No, no, I just, I just wanted to give counsel the opportunity.
Why don't we do that so that he can leave?
Because I don't know.
My question was this. We had a master plan, which is still ongoing. And the question was, if a meeting is posted, can there be more than four members or more at any meeting? Because there was a time when there were more than three, and our majority, our voting majority is four. And there were times when there were four people there, and that was questioned. Or any meeting, any meeting.
So I think.
If it's posted, can there be a majority of the planning board there?
So you mean a meeting of another public body?
A, a subcommittee, or we, as part of the planning board process, sometimes have a meeting where we finish a subsection, and then we publicize and advise the community to come in and comment on that. And my question was.
I know.
There, there's usually a majority of the planning board. And can there be? Because that question has come up.
Sure. So the, the general rule is that a majority of the board, which constitutes a quorum of the board, whether it happens to be the planning board or any other, yes, cannot be present and deliberate, without that being an open meeting properly noticed, which under the open meeting law requires 48 hours posted notice. There are a variety of exceptions that are worked into the open meeting law. For example, I get the question often about, let's say, four members of your planning board attending a meeting of your Board of Selectmen. If you each individually sit in the office in, in the, in the meeting, in the audience, and you don't participate collectively, but your participation is at the microphone individually, that's permitted, notwithstanding the fact that there are four of you in the audience. But you can't all four be in the far corner, talking amongst yourselves quietly, unless you've posted that notice, and you still can't do it quietly.
So, so back, unless we've posted that notice as a planning board meeting.
That's correct. If you post that same meeting as a planning board meeting, then you could even deliberate in the meeting. in the meeting, as long as you did so openly and audibly to anybody who might be in attendance.
So, just quickly, so I'll be clear, on something like a Planning Board Subcommittee, if there, if it's an open meeting, that is, that there are people other than Planning Board, people, members there, can there be four members if they're not deliberating on something that has to do, say, with an item that's on our agenda or that kind of thing?
If there is no deliberation on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the Planning Board, then it's not considered a meeting. The definition of meeting in the open meeting law requires there to be deliberation.
So, the question, I guess Paul's question would be, if it's posted as a Subcommittee meeting of the Planning Board?
Yes.
It's not posted as a Planning Board meeting, right? Is that correct?
Right.
So, only the members of the Subcommittee can be present? If it's two members of the Planning Board, two members of the Planning Board, others can be present, but they can't be deliberating with the majority of the Planning Board?
That would be correct. If a greater number of members of the Planning Board were to attend the meeting, such that the Subcommittee meeting has suddenly become at least a number, a Planning Board meeting, but it hasn't been posted as a Planning Board meeting, there can't be deliberation.
So, there can be input from individuals of the Planning Board, but there can't be deliberation between the Planning Board members at that meeting?
And that's where you get into the gray area. I'd be very cautious, because a member of the Planning Board gets up, that member, by virtue of participating in the discussion of the Subcommittee, constitutes a quorum and provides input, while presumably, if they're providing input on a topic that is being discussed by the Subcommittee, by virtue of it being discussed by the Subcommittee, it's within the jurisdiction of the Planning Board. That's an arguable open meeting law violation.
So, couldn't the same be, so couldn't the same be applied to a Selectmen's meeting if there are four members of the Planning Board, even though they weren't in their corner? If they were in individual pieces and they were, you know, getting up and speaking in relation, could you draw the same conclusion?
You could, except there's an express provision for that in the open meeting law, and there's not a circumstance described in the open meeting law where you'd have a Subcommittee, but then additional members of the greater body attending that Subcommittee meeting and participating in such a manner that it expands into a quorum of the underlying law.
So, that danger is more specific to the Subcommittee of the Planning, of the Board itself, and the Board being present in more than a majority?
I would say that it is, and the only reason I would say that is because the express language of the open meeting law, and one of the exceptions to what would otherwise be deemed a violation, is when you've got individuals who are attending the meeting of another public body. It says "another public body," and I question whether you've got a board and then a Subcommittee of that board, whether remaining members of the board who are not on the Subcommittee attending the Subcommittee meeting, are they attending the meeting of another board, another public body? It's in that gray area. So, I'd be, I'm less comfortable with it than I am with.
Even if it's publicized and noticed as a Subcommittee of the Planning Board?
Right, if other members who are participating are not Subcommittee members.
Are not Subcommittee, is that the operative phrase, not Subcommittee? Then I would suggest, Madam Chair, from now on, when we appoint a Subcommittee, that we appoint all the members of the Planning Board, would that?
Or if we posted the Subcommittee as a Planning Board meeting.
But, yeah. I've got a couple of comments. Two things came up here. Master plan, we have a master plan committee, which is comprised of members of many different boards and public at large, as well as Planning Board members. That's not a Planning Board meeting, but ultimately, Planning Board gets to decide that. It's actually a Subcommittee meeting, Subcommittee of the Planning Board.
If I may.
So, that's a different kettle of fish. But, ordinary, typical Subcommittee meetings are generally a meeting with an applicant to gather facts, but not to deliberate or decide. And there's, even if there are other additional members that constitute a quorum, if they're all just gathering information from the applicant and not making any decisions, is that a problem?
Madam Chair, you might say something?
Well, what I wanted to say is, I want Jack to ask his question, but I think, in deference to everyone who's gathered here for other things on our agenda, if it's going to go much longer, I think we should probably have this discussion offline.
Well, most of them have attended Subcommittee meetings, and I think they would like to know the answer.
Please answer, and then I think we should take the applicant.
I'll try and be quick, although I don't know that there's a quick answer to it, so we can discuss it.
I'm sorry for the complicated questions.
No, it's okay.
Let's do it after the meeting, because you're right.
Well, I think.
We can bore these people enough with the regular business.
We kept Adam long enough. I would like to let him.
Answer, and then we can, if it's, if we have further questions, perhaps we could do that offline through staff.
Absolutely. So, this question gets asked often about, and the slang terminology is working groups or work groups, and this happens often. I have, you know, complex projects, multi-unit residential projects or mixed-use projects, and they often go six, eight, 10 sessions of a public hearing. And sometimes, all the workings through of the design detail doesn't necessarily need to occur in a meeting of the full Board. And so, there are work sessions that are conducted between monthly or biweekly meetings. I always recommend that at those work sessions, a quorum of the Board not attend, because I appreciate the idea, that is there really deliberation? If you're all sitting there quietly and you're not saying a word, and you're just listening, I guess that's not technically deliberation. Isn't there some tendency to say something? Isn't it?
Ask for clarification, still not deliberating.
Probably not, but the danger exists. And so, given the tendency of the division of open government and these circumstances to always err in the side of caution and say, "Yeah, you shouldn't have done that," we recommend that for these work sessions or informal meetings, which are meant to be more information gathering, that it be less than a quorum of the Board that attends, and then reports back to the Board at the next open session. So, if they were working through on design of a project, two, even three members of your Board, because you're a seven-member Board, could attend that meeting, could represent their interests and what they believe to be interests of the Board, but ultimately, whatever results from that meeting is brought back to the Board at the next session of the public hearing.
Unless it was advertised as a meeting of the Planning Board, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay.
How's it complicated if B Cat televises it and I watch it? Never mind.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Thomas Murphy here for the applicant. With me is Lynn Shu, who's the owner of the property, and Brian Donahue, who's her architect in this project. Just, Brian was not the site engineer, site engineer wasn't able to make it tonight. Just to refresh the Board's memory, this is property on Cambridge Street, 336 Cambridge Street. It's an old structure. The house was built in 1820, according to the assessors' records. It's been termed a grandfathered three-family building with one commercial space in the first floor. We have a letter to that effect from the building inspector, and my client is looking to fortunately preserve this house, as opposed to knock down the old houses, which seems to happen more often than not nowadays. But in doing so, she wants to upgrade the building a little bit, make it a little bit more of a viable business opportunity and more attractive to tenants. So, there is a small addition that's going to be going on to the rear of the structure. There's going to be some enhancements to the site as part of the project as well. When we were last here, which I believe was two meetings ago, the original design had the plan extending along the front of the site, had the parking area extending along the front of the site. And the feedback that we received after that meeting was that the preference was that it go along the house, as it was originally designed. So, that adjustment has been made to the site plan. It results in a little bit more green space, the first, the previous parking area extended to the front of the house as well. It does a better job of preserving the buffer zone between the parking area and the neighbor, the residential neighbor to the left. And it's been done in such a way that it slopes towards the rear, the grade slopes towards the rear of the parking lot, and the engineer designed a small dip in the ground to kind of collect the runoff and let it percolate into the ground. I did speak with staff this afternoon, and the Board of Health has apparently asked for drainage clogs, which I tried to get this afternoon, but I wasn't able to get them in time. But I think they'd probably want to review them anyway, so we come here tonight, or at least I come here tonight, not really expecting a vote because of that, but certainly to get any other feedback or input from the Board, because, you know, we think this is going to be a very beneficial project to the town, and we'd like to get going on it. And if there are any other outstanding issues or requests, we'd like to get those addressed so that we get before, hopefully, next time, we will have had the Board of Health blessing, and we can hopefully move forward.
Sounds good. Staff?
Sure. Actually, in the next three matters, you're going to hear the same sentence. The Board of Health would like you to wait to hear a little bit more about drainage, which I agree, we had a very successful Subcommittee meeting, not on this project, but the next project, but they all kind of came into play, about just additional information on drainage. But what I did mention to Attorney Murphy is, I think if we can button up kind of everything else, let's try to do that, and then at the next meeting, we can figure out the drainage situation. So, at the last meeting, we talked about that we had the original architect plan that showed the parking kind of along the side, but the site plan was out front. I think the Board, the consensus of the Board was to show it along the side, try to put as much green space out front as possible. And then some, and there was, I don't remember if we talked at the meeting, but we had recommended that the dumpster, they show this long drive to the right of the building, which is, it's only a driveway for the dumpster. If the dumpster can be relocated to a different area and eliminate that, that can become green space. And then, as we're having the conversation as well with many other properties, but as well as the neighboring property, to provide, the right, in front of this site right now is kind of, it's all, it's just pavement. There really isn't a defined pedestrian area, so to define that pedestrian area along their front edge is, we had recommended, was an important aspect.
You mean putting in a sidewalk, which would be concrete with vertical granite?
That's what we would begin to recommend, yeah.
Has the applicant agreed to the eliminate, to moving the dumpster and the elimination of the drive?
So, I was talking to Attorney Murphy. I'm not sure if we're all on 100% with everything yet, but wanted to talk about it at this meeting and bring it forward of our discussion among the members of the Board and the applicant.
The, I don't believe the client, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe moving the dumpster is an issue. In fact, we're hoping to, there's only going to be one commercial tenant in there, some office space. The other three are residential, who have the ability to use curbside pickup. So, we're hoping at the worst, we'll just need a very small dumpster, and the DPW might even grant a waiver, so we'll talk to them about that. But in the event we do need a dumpster, we're okay with putting it over at the back of the proposed parking lot, which will allow us to recapture that whole driveway as green space. So, that shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you. Kristen, is that everything?
That's everything, yeah, that's everything I have at this point.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we start down your end, Jack?
As a three-family house or multiple commercial property, they are as of right entitled to curbside pickup?
The residential, I believe that, if I remember correctly, just recently, the Selectmen voted to.
On a case-by-case basis, so would you not have to apply for that?
I think we will, but that's, they had it before, because there are recycling and trash bins there, so it's always had the curbside pickup. We will certainly reapply, but they're more concerned with large commercial condo associations type of a deal, so.
Yeah. Okay, I just didn't know the fine tuning of that, but.
We'll make the application.
I'll leave that up to you to.
I don't have a concern about that.
Yeah, that's the only question I have on the dumpster. That's an extra piece of pavement, not necessary. That's all I have. Thank you.
Is that a busy plan, or is it?
It is.
I said, is that a busy plan?
It definitely is.
I don't know if you can see that.
Your glasses are dirty, Paul.
Yeah, I would just say this. I'm sure the historical commissioner is very pleased that that building, they've taken some heavy hits over the last year or so.
We had before them back in February, and they were very excited that they were finally going to get to save a house, as opposed to nothing.
The other thing I would ask, I see along the front here, it's right on Cambridge Street, the sidewalk says "bitwalk," and I wonder, the town has a sidewalk, you know, allocation and policy, and I would wonder if, with this being upgraded in this way, that we couldn't ask the town engineers or whatever if you're pointing and so forth. So, I hope you're going to tell me yes.
It is going to be concrete with vertical granite.
Well, hold on. So, they're reflecting, I think, what might be on sight right now. But the question that I would recommend to you and the applicant is that it be vertical granite. We should probably.
Discuss that. So, thank you for bringing it up. Yes, that is what we would.
Okay, no, I was thinking, you know, that's, depending upon what it's going to cost, may negate the project, and so, I would think our, you know, I would go to the town on our behalf as a Planning Board and say, since we're looking for vertical concrete, is there a possibility that something could be taken out of that fund to make sure that that's nice vertical granite that the town does?
Yes, thank you.
I was actually thinking that the applicant would do it.
We have not agreed to that, and hasn't actually been discussed. I mean, clearly, what's there is there, or appropriately, what isn't there, isn't there. And I think the plan just reflects it's a bituminous walkway, you know, morphs into the parking lot or whatever.
So, you're just leaving what's there?
Well, we're going to obviously turn the, most of that parking lot into front lawn green space, so there's going to be some rehab work done. It's an expensive project, and, you know, it's a small.
It was just a question.
No, and actually.
You can't get refused unless you ask.
Right, no, but your point is taken, if there's town money to do this, because quite frankly, this is a small businesswoman trying to, it's going to cost, it's an expensive project, rehabbing an old house like this. And she's doing an incredible upgrade, in my opinion, of the site, and right now, it just looks like a big parking lot. Vertical granite with poured concrete over that whole stretch of Cambridge Street is going to be an expensive addition to what's already a tight budget for her. We could probably do a bituminous walkway that we, you know, I'm not quite sure where the right-of-way ends and the front lawn starts, but we certainly could grant a sidewalk easement to, as a compromise. But if there's any way around, you know, vertical granite.
I'm not asking the opponent to put in vertical granite.
I'm seconding Paul's suggestion that if there is a way through DPW or whatever fund you were speaking of, that the town could do that at their next, you know, sidewalk, they do it every year, they put some sidewalks in.
Yeah, I'm not sure we have any.
This is a state road.
Say and all of that, yeah.
We don't do sidewalks.
Yeah, I know you can't, you can't order that, but you can not order my client to do it. And we can look at other avenues. It's, like I said, and I don't want to belabor it, but it's an expensive addition to it, or it's already a tight budget, and I think the town is getting a lot of benefit out of what she's doing to the site, so we're kind of hoping for a little give and take as far as that goes.
So, is what's there now a bituminous sidewalk?
What's there now is just parking lot.
There's no sidewalk at all.
Bituminous parking lot.
There's a bit of a berm. I don't think it'd be the finished grade.
It's probably been like that 50 years.
Would be the finished grade, I believe. So, we should ask the.
Do you know if you have room between the, can there be road, grass strip, sidewalk site?
Road, grass strip, sidewalk site?
Is there?
Not all within the right-of-way, I don't think, but some would be on our front yard.
Would that be of concern?
Not to me.
I'm just trying to figure out.
It's always nice to have a grass strip between the sidewalk and the street on a main street.
What that would avoid is having to put in vertical granite, because we wouldn't be doing the curbing, and bituminous is less expensive than a poured concrete all the way up and down. So, that's why I came up with that suggestion.
That sounds like a reasonable compromise to me.
It would allow pedestrians to continue on up and.
And walk to the bus stop that's.
Maybe I should have said "ask the state," because I, my wife calls O'Connor's hard with my toy store. If you go up to Bill Ricker, you see hundreds and hundreds of feet of vertical granite, both sides of the street. They've redone that. That must be millions of dollars to have done all that. of dollars to have done all that, the grant to do that. And so, you know, if we go to DPW, say, that's the state, say, could you, you know, ask the state? That's, that's all I was thinking. If there's a possibility while this is going on.
Well, it certainly wouldn't hurt us to ask, and I would love to have the state come in and do it. But I do think that we should have a Plan B, because I think the likelihood of the state coming down and doing that one little strip of sidewalk to please us is probably pretty slim. But if we can do a grass strip and then a sidewalk, even if it's a little bit on the applicant's property, that might be a compromise we could all live with.
I think we, you know, we're going to obviously have somebody out pouring the parking lot anyway. So just adding that at the time, it might be prohibitively expensive, and I think it will accomplish the purpose.
Right. And I think having the grass strip there would make people feel more comfortable without the.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm concerned if we have a bit berm out there, that the state plows are just going to tear that up the first winter. Vertical granite is more durable.
Certainly, yes.
Well, I wasn't even suggesting a berm. I was just suggesting a walkway.
Yeah.
Grass, but there's got, but if you're going to have a grass or something separate, you, you're going to close it and create just one driveway instead of that wide open sea of pavement. So as you close that in to make a driveway, you're going to have to define it with.
With a berm.
With a berm of some kind and.
Within the parking, within the parking area.
No, along the street.
Along the street?
You weren't thinking of just leaving that a just wide open.
No, no, it's going to be grass.
It's going to be grass.
This isn't, but there's nothing separating the grasses.
Right.
I'm not making my point. I'm sorry. Okay.
If I might.
Please.
In terms of the development on site on the applicant's property, we will be paving the parking with, and we will be having Batumis berms on site. But we hadn't intended to bring that out to pass the property line. So I guess that's what's being discussed here, is what happens from her property line out to the street. So.
Okay, I see the question. All right.
Staff? Wake up.
We can, we can.
No, I'm thinking about it.
Yes, we are. We are.
Can you?
Thinking through how much room there is actually right there.
I think, I mean, I think these are probably things we might need to, you could probably discuss with staff, and we're going to have to look at offline, since we're not going to be voting on it tonight anyway. We want to make sure there's a walkway there. It's to your client's benefit to make sure that what is there isn't going to get torn up by the plows, obviously.
Just in, in the interest of time, if we were to adjust the plan to show the walkway as we discussed without the vertical granite and the poured concrete, so it's on the plan for next time, I'm just looking to.
I understand.
Continue this conversation two weeks from now and then come back another two weeks.
Right, I understand.
I don't know if you necessarily have to update the plan other than determine what you can, between now and the next meeting, determine what's feasible to do, agree to do it, and then as part of the whole plan update.
Okay.
For endorsement, we could update it. But I think it's more important.
Information before, to you before they come to the next meeting.
Yeah, but that's my point, is if we can figure out what's feasible and what you can agree to, so we can present that option, kind of cross-section.
Well, I can certainly, I think, agree to take away the driveway in the right and move the dumpster in the event we're required to have a dumpster. And I'll discuss it further with my client, but I think putting a asphalt walkway along the front.
With a grass strip.
Walkway, grass.
But then with the, is there a problem with the street and the grass with no berm at all?
That's what, let us figure that out a little.
Okay, we can figure that out offline. That's fine. Ernie, did you have a question?
Yes, we're, sorry. We're also dealing with the Abbudding property.
We are. That's different.
Okay. And I think we're asking, I know they're a much bigger corporation.
Yes, they're putting in vertical granite.
They're putting vertical granite and I think asphalt sidewalks. I'm not sure.
That was proposed, but I, we discussed concrete.
Okay. So if we have concrete, I, okay, we'll let them discuss it.
Okay. Further question along that line, since the Board of Health is going to get involved, and if the project as it's proposed leaves two, three, four feet of asphalt, which is not part of the paved travelway, the Board of Health is going to have a problem if that's sloped towards the street, and it is, with water running into the street and potential ice formations in the wintertime. That was one of the problems they've had at several places. So be prepared to deal with that at the Board of Health, and the solution may be a curb, a sidewalk, even if it's off your property.
I'll talk to them. But again, right now, it's all pavement. So whatever's, whatever happens is going to be an improvement over what's there now, clearly.
Okay, very good.
It's all just running into the street now.
Okay, I just.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
Be prepared to have that conversation.
Yeah.
So what? Yes, I am. Thank you.
Joe? So let me read the comments here. There are, a lot of the comments are existing comments, but there are a couple of additional new ones. So Inspector Buildings on 417, please refer to the office. Previous letter of recommendation dated February 13th talks about that. And then it says additionally, we would like to consider the following. Dumpster location, proposed location, which we just addressed. So I think we don't have to deal with that. And back in the streets, just backing into the property, that's in relation to the dumpster as well. And then drawing to note buffer depth between RO and IG zone along the northern property line. Drawing to note.
Buffer depth. That was a question of the building inspector. There is an extensive explanation that has, that satisfied the building inspector of the memo that, that Attorney Murphy put together about the buffer zone in the IG district.
Okay. So that's all sat there. Where are that? Board of Health, they had some additional, they had some previous comments, and then they had some additional comments in 417. And it just says, as we discussed, I issued staff comments of the project based on the plan dated 3/21/19. Please disregard those comments as the new site plan dated 415 has been submitted. We'll not be issuing any comments by, okay, so I guess they're going to be dealing with the new plan at this point. So there's nothing really that they've added to that. And the next one was conservation, 417. And conservation just says if the land disturbance exceeds 10,000 square feet, a permit under the stormwater bylaw will be needed. That's it. Me? Okay, yeah. No, so I, I mean, everything I, it was, you know, the dumpster issue, which was one of my, was going to be one of my questions. The other was the walkway going forward. And I know this is, I know they're spending, they're doing a nice job as it is. I would only request and I wouldn't necessarily require, but that the walkway going to the front door be done in some sort of a paving block or a brick or something that went in, you know, that complemented the historic nature of the property.
Talk the walkway from the parking area to the front door?
Um, from the park into the front door, and then from the front, and from the street walkway to the front, you know, in other words, the walking, the walkway within the property, from the parking lot to the front door and from the, and there's also a walkway from the street to the front door. You know, it would be, it would be nice that if that could be done, you know, a way that would complement the historic nature of the property as well, with some sort of paving block or brick versus a Batumis. But again, I know there's spending, a lot of money being spent over there. So if that's something that could be put in, I would, I would love to see that.
Thank you, Joe.
All right.
Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only, the only comment I had was maybe a couple of them. One, if we're going to put grass all over the front, you can see the grass that's over to the right is in tough shape. Is there an opportunity to put maybe some, some trees there? Again, I wouldn't say you need large trees there, but maybe just some, some complimentary trees there in front of the front yard, maybe on any of the side there.
You're talking about in the front of the building, Bill?
Yeah, yeah, just to kind of, just to buffer.
Joe, we could certainly look at that.
Yeah, I know what the thought of us, of the board is. And the other thing when I was there the other night, there's that, there's that wood shed in the back, which is not on that property, right?
Correct.
And there's, there's, there's a couple of, there were a couple of trucks back there. But so that's, is that part of the industrial zone? And there's going to be a buffer between there and this residential zone now? Or, because it looks like it's, it looks like it's just in the backyard there, pretty close, right on the outside of the chain of fence.
Yeah, the, on the other side of the fence, I believe that is not proposed to be continued to be there in the future proposal for the property.
Okay, so the wood shed goes, goes away. Okay.
Yeah, if you may want to, if you want to ask the other applicant, they may, they are here, and they could confirm that, or you could wait to confirm it when they, they're out.
Okay, thank you. Ernie?
Everybody said everything that had to be said. Thank you.
Is there anyone on the audience, in the audience that would like to speak on this matter?
Hello, my name is Michael Murray. My parents live at the residential property directly at Abbuddings on Cambridge Street here. After hearing some of the comments, we had a couple of new questions, so I'll try to, I'll take too long. But so the dumpster location, they said they're going to move it if they can't get the town to pick it up. So we don't know where that's going to be. If, if they, if the town will pick up the trash, they will need a dumpster.
Yes.
And then if there's approval, they don't know where that. So can there be a restriction that it's still located on this side of the property and not against the residential property?
I think the idea is to not have it on that side of the property, because we don't want to have the additional driveway that's only there for the dumpster. Kristen, where, did we have a location that was proposed?
No, it hasn't been proposed. We just, even if it stays on that side, we obviously don't want it in the front yard. Does it need to be that long of a driveway? It just seemed excessive amount of pavement to get to a dumpster. I completely understand Michael's issue of, you obviously, you don't want it on, on the residential property. Is there enough buffer where the exist, where the proposed parking lot is to have it somewhere in there that it's not an issue? Or do you, or can you try to locate it on that side, but shorten the depth of the driveway? There are all things we can talk about. But our comment is in the existing configuration, it just doesn't seem to be, seems to be too much pavement.
I think my understanding when the truck is, it would be back here somewhere.
Yeah.
Not on the, not on the side next to the house, but like back here. Because it was told, explained to me that the truck could get in, get it and get back out.
I mean, that's probably where we would kind of circled it.
I mean, if you're going to shorten this, then you're going to have a dumpster in the front yard. I'm not sure that's not what anybody wants. So if it's going to be over here, we'd certainly try to put it in the back of the, of the parking lot. If we haven't have to have one at all, it'll have, it'll be a smaller dumpster. It's not going to be a huge industrial grade. There's just going to be one, you know, accountant or some professional officer in there. It's not.
And it would be enclosed, I assume.
It would be enclosed, sure. So I, I mean, Mike, if you've got a better suggestion or a.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I understand the comments of the board not having that long driveway. I get that, but it seems counterintuitive to put the commercial dumpster closer to the residential property. So if that were the case, I would want it clearly defined as to where that potential location would be. Additional screening and restricted hours of operation.
Sure.
Fair enough. Thank you.
The, just a comment on the sidewalk and the curbing, which might be a moot point, because this is a state road and they might have their own. But if they don't require vertical granite curbing and concrete sidewalks, I would submit that the plan board should enforce that that should be done. This is Cambridge Street.
Yeah.
The other question is, is there any kind of lighting plan for the parking lot? Or can a plan be submitted?
We could put something, we could put something together.
And just, I know there was a comment you made about the, I think the building inspector said something about the buffer. There was a question raised that was answered. Could we get clarification on that answer? Because.
Yes.
I don't know what the answer is.
So back to the lighting, you would be looking for low light that does not shine over.
Yeah, I mean, we understand it's a parking lot and that they're going to want to light it. We want it to be safe. And we just don't want the light to shine.
Naturally, yes. So is there, do you have a lighting plan or is that?
I don't, I don't think we've, we haven't gotten to that point. We will. It's, it's a very small area, so it's not, we're not going to need a huge amount of lighting. But we'll make sure it points down, not out.
Could they do, could you maybe incorporate like some period lighting like they have in the downtown overlay, like more of a antique lighting into that area?
Lantern.
So it's a low, very, you know.
Lantern type of thing.
Like a lantern type, yeah.
Yeah, I think he just doesn't want a spotlight in the side of the house going towards.
It's the side of the building though, right?
Yeah, the side.
That's not going to be really visible. And our bylaws, I believe, require that there be no light shed on adjoining properties. Is that true? Yeah. Well, that's Bill's area.
And maybe even not have it lit all night long.
You certainly have a photometric plan done. If that would make the neighbor happy, then it's not, it's not a difficult thing to do. So I would imagine that the lighting would be at the doorways, sconce lighting, and then maybe one fixture to light the parking area. I think would cover it. And it would be a cutoff fixture, probably a low-hy pole with just a light fixture that just provides enough light for safety. Wouldn't be shining towards the neighbor at all. We can, we can have a photometric study done.
Okay.
And like I said, just, so a little more, if I could get more clarification. I know this is, you know, they're non-conforming use and so they're going through Section 6. And but it is an industrial property, adjoining residential property. So if they weren't going in that way, they should have a buffer and it should be landscaped. We actually, if I, you know, rough math, it looks like they're providing pretty close to 20%. So I'm fine with that. Just again, I had mentioned before, I think there should be some screening along this property. You know, evergreen, minimum growth of 10 feet tall, just because especially this is different than before, which I'm fine with the configuration. But if people were to come into this parking lot and they were to back into those parking spots, the headlights would be facing right at the house. So to be able to do that, say, within 15 feet, and then if the rest of this was lawn, say, within 15 feet of the property line, you know, that would just.
What is the buffer?
It's 20%.
And what are you proposing for that?
Well, as we're just, it's a, it's a non-conforming grandfather view. So we're trying to do the best we can. And I haven't done the math either, but it is pretty close. So this configuration beats that concern a lot better than the first one that had it spread out along the.
Right. I think what, what Mike's probably looking for is something, some sort of.
Some kind of screening.
Screening so that if the lights are on, it's, it's not shining into his parents' property, but blocked by shrubs or trees or something like that.
And to say, you know, that there's some trees out here, and it's hard to tell from this what they are, are taking down, which is fine.
Try to minimize it.
Yeah. And so some of the mature trees will stay, which is great. But in the future, you know, if they were to, you know, you know, to keep encroaching and keep encroaching. So if there was some kind of line, even if it's not the exact 20%, if there was a, you know, a hard stop line that says this is going to be, you know, where the shrub line is, and it won't be encroached upon, something along those lines, so we know that it'll stay in perpetuity.
And could you maybe outline that and submit it to staff before our next meeting?
We'll talk about putting some plantings there or something.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would recommend, if possible, that either our staff or the applicant and Mr. Murray actually go out on site and try to identify what trees are going to stay. So I mean, you know, the guy with the excavator comes in and unless you mark it and, you know, and try to figure out on the plan and as well as in the field what for sure is staying. I think that'll be helpful to everybody.
Thank you. Okay?
I think that was everything.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak on this matter? No? Okay, then I'm the last one. I'm thrilled that this house is going to be saved. I really don't want to see that driveway there with the dumpster, but I think if we can find a location that's not going to be too intrusive to the neighbors on the other side, it would be better. But I'm, I'm really happy to see that it's going to be saved and excited about the project. So as you know, we're not going to vote tonight because we're waiting for information from the Board of Health. And I think you have your marching orders and what you need to get back to staff. Do you have any other questions for us?
No, as long as we think we've identified any issues, what I'm trying to avoid obviously is coming in next time and somebody saying, oh, I forgot about that. So we can certainly address what, what has been discussed and we'll get back to staff between now and next week hopefully. And come back in a couple of weeks and see where we are.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of...
A second.
Sounds good to me. A second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, six-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Fall asleep, Mike.
Our next item is Item 7F, a continued public hearing, an application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, 108 Muller Road. Edward and Elena Yivitz-Gaya are the applicants.
I think Tom represents them, and he's...
Oh, okay.
Coming back in.
I think this is the most hearings Tom has had in one night for a while.
Yeah, it saves his travel time, he has to come so far.
Light was red tonight, Jerry.
There was no hockey game either tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, again, Madam Chairman, Thomas Murphy for the applicant, L. Nelson, who's the project engineer, is with me. This is the property of 108 Muller Road, the application for subdivision approval. We've been before the board a few times, and we're familiar with what the concerns and the, and the issues have been. At our last meeting, we were still talking about potentially using the Muller Road right-of-way, there were a couple of members that weren't present, so we didn't vote, but we just had a general discussion. I was asked to look into two items that the board interested in. One was, was there would be some sort of a common driveway agreement amongst those that are using it, put in place. My client talked to the only other person that, that uses the driveway other than him was, and they were agreeable. I put a draft agreement together, I sent a copy to staff, all neighbors are in favor of signing that, in the event we get to that point. So, I think that, certainly, the, the purpose of it is to address the concerns about cars blocking the driveway, and maintenance of the driveway, and things of that nature. So, all parties have agreed that it's, we'll all share in the maintenance, it's a private area, they don't expect the town to be plowing it or anything of that nature, they agree not to block the driveway by parking on it or, or any other manner. So, that is in place, that's something that was not on the table at our last meeting. And the second thing that we've done, that staff asked me to do, and L. did it for me, was identify on the plan, a couple of bumpout areas where, as we discussed last time, we wanted to try to widen the driveway as wide as we could, in a couple of areas, in case there were two cars passing, there'd be an area to pull out.
That doesn't show the bumpouts.
So, the area in red, here is one such area, this one here as well, that widens the paved area to roughly 14 to 15 feet, and if two cars are coming in either direction, that does give room to pull over and let the other one go by. So, that was requested of us to try to address the, the issues with the narrowness of the paved roadway, which is about 11 feet. Whether having those two things available now that we couldn't, we didn't have last time, is enough to sway opinion on the Muller Road entrance, I guess is the, is the, is the question for this evening. Frankly, if it's not, if that's not the case, we're gonna look at the Cormier Road option, because, as we've talked about before, that's a 40-foot right-of-way, and we have plenty of room to put a safe access through there. So, tonight, again, not expecting a vote, but if we do have to go the Cormier Road, we have to go back to the Board of Health first, to have them review that component of it, before we come back to you for further action. So, what I'm kind of hoping to get out of this evening is, is a general sense from the board as to which way you prefer, and if it's Muller Road, then we can stay with this plan and, and move forward. If it's Cormier, then we'll go back and see the, um, the Board of Health, and come back, circle back to you.
Okay, thank you. Kristen?
Um, I don't have too much to add. I was pleased to, that they were able to get the, all three property owners to at least put an agreement together, so that, that piece of it wasn't a mystery. So, that, that's good to know. Um, it's really, you know, which one or the other, and in every scenario, I think we get to, well, if this, then this, and, you know, it's a narrow roadway, will the bumpouts help? Is, it's, one additional house is, you know, as, as the police and fire, it was like, well, they have agreed, and correct me if I'm wrong, to, if they do do the, the Muller Road access, to bring a fire hydrant into the site at the new house, as well as mark Muller Road for better wayfinding that there's these, these houses are back here, and then they were successful to get the agreement. So, I think those are steps in the right direction to add a comfort level. The police and fire were kind of, it's one more house, just one more house, so maybe, you know, they're, they're okay. They did state that if they connected, they were very concerned about a cut-through possibility between Cormier and Muller, if these two areas connected. We did speak with counsel on that question of rights in a way, and improvement of a way, and you can't, you cannot un-improve the way. You can, if you have rights in a way, you can improve it, but a single person doesn't have rights to un-improve it. So, the, the question we had very early on of, well, can you do this, and then stop it, and put something in between to block access, is, is, is not feasible. So, um, you know, it's just kind of weighing all these options, and coming down on one side or the other, and literally one side, Cormier Road or Muller Road, and trying to figure out what makes sense, and, and that's what I think we're looking for this board to, to talk about tonight. So, the applicant has a direction to go in either one way or the others, and, and again, the Board of Health does want to weigh in if it, if the plan is changed, so we do not have a recommendation for a vote tonight.
Okay, thank you. Ernie, why don't you start us off, for a change?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, Chair, one minute, sorry. A question for the applicant. I, I noticed that this does say 15-foot right-of-way, is part of the right-of-way in the wetlands, or, or what?
No, it's a, it's a 15, I, I believe the whole 15 feet is, 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 none of it ventures into the wetlands, it, it's contiguous to wetlands in some places, but it's 15 feet on paper, it's 11 feet actually paved, and then there's, there's just some shoulder that's not paved.
So, um, correct me if I'm wrong, if you can't get access from Muller Road, then you're gonna look at Cormier. Constructing a, and you'd be constructing a road then, or a driveway?
I call it a driveway, it's certainly not a road.
Okay, so it doesn't, what I'm, what I'm looking for, it doesn't have to be constructed to town standards, then, is what I'm saying.
Not, not for a public way, no, it would, it would just be a driveway.
So, i- is there any possibility of, of widening the right-of-way?
The existing right-of-way?
Yeah, I mean, widening the pavement on the existing right-of-way.
Well, that's what that red, there were a couple of areas where...
Right, I see those, yeah.
Where we've widened them in parts.
Ernie, are you saying, if it's a 15-foot right-of-way, why don't we have it paved 15 feet?
I think, I think some of it is topography, it drops off in places.
If, I, I may be looking at it incorrectly, but, oh, okay, you're saying that...
None of it, if you're, if you're, none of it ventures into the, it doesn't need a wetland from the plan, but some of it, from a grading standpoint, it, it's slowed down.
Yeah, it'd be right on the edge or something, okay. I, I, I think I'd still prefer the, the Muller Road access with the, as you call them, bumpouts, because it gives us the advantage of having the, for the fire department, having the hydrant at the end there, which now they'd have to hose from, I think there's a hydrant out at the beginning, from the beginning. And you say that their, staff says they're, they're comfortable with just one more house, fire department, but they don't like it?
Comfortable wasn't the word.
Well, they're, they're, just one more house.
They said they, they didn't think that was a break, the breaking point.
There was no objection.
And with the fire, with the fire hydrant, they felt a lot more comfortable, so they could have access to, at that point, if they couldn't...
And can we condition our...
Larger equipment.
Sorry. Can we, can we condition our permit that absolutely for sure, there's never any more houses on this right-of-way?
We can condition it that they have to come back to you for a subdivision.
Right, and, okay, a subdivision requires...
So, I can't preclude action by other boards...
Yep.
...in our decision, but you can preclude any further division of these properties needs to come back to you.
And it doesn't look like, would, could there possibly be...
There isn't any, there, no.
No, I don't think so.
Because if you remember, right, right now, the only, this is a subdivision because it's not an ANR, because they had a frontage variance, so there isn't any more, there, there, there wasn't any more frontage, now there's definitely no more, unless they, you know, went to the Board of Appeals and said some crazy number with the frontage variance and the, the lot width variance, so.
Okay, so the only reason they're here is because of, Board of Appeals granted a variance for less than 50 feet, is that what it is?
For, well, for less than 100.
Less than 100, so they, then they have to come to us.
Anything less than 100, you only can do an approval not required if you have 100 feet. If you have less, you have to do a subdivision.
I, I think I would be comfortable with this, as with the bumpouts, and the hydrant at the very end, and adequate, adequate turning, turnaround for large vehicles at the very end. Right now, that might exist, might exist, but it, they might have to cut a corner off the grass of the existing house, maybe, to back in, or, actually, now that I'm thinking of it, as I was thinking, as, as I was mentioning at the last meeting, if the grass area in the cul-de-sac was gone, or flat enough so that a truck could drive over it, you might not have a...
What grass area is that?
There's a grass area at the end of this. Does it show on the plan? There's a circle at the very end, in front of the existing house.
Circles in the parlor, that are basically from the house.
House of La Dey.
And there's a gra, and the grass area, there's a grass area right in the middle of it, if you remember, I don't know if you went down there.
Yeah, I did, it was...
Yeah, I don't know if that, okay, let me just rephrase the whole thing, adequate turnaround for the fire engine at the end.
Yeah, um, we could certainly work with the fire department and design something.
Yeah, it's a little...
There's lumpertie turnaround there.
Yeah, kind of, yeah.
I mean, there, there have been emergency equipment up there in the house.
True.
But you could look to modify the...
There is sort of a... I'm all set, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. Phil?
They could drive over anything they want. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, yeah. I, when I went down there, I had given my input to the, to the planning staff, and indicated some, because there weren't any bailout areas, the bailout areas on the right concerns me. If you talked about bailout on the left, that might be a little bit easier, but the bailout on the right basically bails you out into the, to the wetlands down there, and you do have elevation issues. So, if you don't have any way to kind of stop you from bailing out, in, in that case, the right's probably not safe, in my opinion. I was also surprised that you were, where, at least the day I went, there was, there was clearly wetlands between the existing house and, and I don't know where they can put the new house on that upland, because there was, there's wetlands right where I thought you could actually do it, and you've got quite a grade coming down from, from the right-of-way down to where that second property is, so I was trying to even figure out where you'd put a house there, because you're gonna be, it's a fairly steep grade from, from that perspective. So, even just that would be a challenge, and then you'd just drop right into the wetlands on either side there. So, in the event that's even engineering possible, my experience, my, my experience was that you, you, the best way to do that would be going up Cormier. When I drove around there, I think that long stretch, adding another house in on the, I'm not gonna say remote possibility, the, the possibility of, of another board approving additional frontage is not out of the realm of my experience. So, again, Cormier is, is my preferred way. I know, uh, the chairperson talked about kind of, you know, undoing that and making it gravel, I think at the last meeting that I wasn't at, but that, in that, that's impossible to do, I'm not all that concerned about the cut-through, because basically, when you go down Muller, you can't really, you can't really see that till you're right up on top of it, and it, it does look like a driveway. Coming up Cormier, basically, it's a driveway that's split between a couple different houses, now you have a, a separate one up there. What I, I think, probably what you gotta do there is, is to put a fence over where that, you can extend that right-of-way, just for protection of the other families that are there, you've got, now you've got a, a driveway with two families that are gonna be coming up and down there, but that'd be my preference on the Cormier side. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Joe?
So, my thoughts on it are, and I, it's funny, we gets, we got seven people in the board, probably get seven different thoughts on this thing. I, mine happen to be the opposite of that. I, I just feel like, opening up Cormier, I just think that, when you, you know, there's, that area of town has got, there's so many reasons to cut through streets.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, whether it's to get to Woben, if you, you know, you're living in the, you're working in the industrial area, you live in Woben, you're, you're gonna cut through over as much as you want, much as you can, if you're going to the, what used to be the Caldor Mall, or the Middlesex Mall, and you want to get to Woben, you're gonna try to cut through as much as you can.
By the way, your age, calling it the Caldor Mall, you know.
Caldor Mall, yeah. So...
I remember when Caldor was there.
Yeah.
I do, and Lowman's.
I remember when it was a swamp.
Like a pantry.
All right, sorry.
So, I, so, so, my fear is that if, if we open it up to Cormier, it's gonna be, it's gonna create, and it's really too narrow to be a cut-through.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it, but it's gonna be a cut-through, I, I feel like it will be a cut-through. I mean, it, you know, it's just, if someone can get a car through there, and they can save some time, they're going through there, you know, and see, probably even gonna show up on ways, and then, you know, you'll get, you'll get lines of traffic going down that road. So, I, my thoughts would be to not open the Cormier up, and widen as much as you can, where you can, and, and if there's areas that drop off, maybe just kind of do post and rail around those, so that you kind of narrow it in, and, almost like they do on the, on the, on the bridges in Wilmington, and, you know, where they kind of narrows out, you, you know, they, they beep the horn, or do whatever they gotta do, you know. But for the most part, you're getting, you're widening as much as you can widen, within reason, and then the areas you can't widen, sort of make some other sort of arrangement for that. I think that would be my preference, and, and that way there, and you get the hydrant down there, and, um, at least you're not creating a cut-through, and I think, I think the cut-through is gonna be the biggest problem, in my opinion, would be the biggest problem, but, uh, thank God it's only one house.
Thank you, Joe. Paul?
I'm thinking with my kids, sometimes they wanted to do something, and I said, okay, I don't think it's the right thing to do, but if you do it, I don't want to hear about it if it doesn't work out. No, really, and that's, I'm, I'm looking at this, and I, you know, if, if, if the board votes it, I don't want to hear about it from police, fire, or anybody else. No, really, because it's, I'm, maybe I'm getting older, I think worst case. You see what's happening with the weather in general. I mean, there are places in Nebraska that are still underwater, thousands of acres, from storms that were so bad, that they were a month, a month, two, three months ago. What's gonna happen? You get a big storm, and the gentleman who plows it is out on Route 93, and you have stoppages out there sometimes for an hour, you know, or more. So, it's snowing, the snow is accumulating here, and he's the one who plows, or if something, God forbid, happens to him, then what are they gonna do? Get together and contract somebody to plow all that and so forth? So, all those positive thoughts, you know, rely in my mind. So, that's, that's, that's all I'm gonna say about it. It's scary a little bit, you know.
Paul, do you have a preferences to access one way or the other?
Well, I almost, just for safety, think that, that there ought to be an access to Cormier, really, with, with that, you know. I wouldn't want to be the one that's trying to go into the bumpout when a, a, a delivery truck is coming down the street.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
So, please don't ask me any more questions, or they'll throw me off.
Jack?
How big...
How big is the bump out? And are you gonna have to sure it up with a wall or something to keep it from caving in?
Would suggest having perhaps a guardrail on that right side for that one foot that we have within the right-of-way.
Could you pull it, Mike, a little closer, Al?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, what we would suggest on the bump outs, particularly on the right-hand side going up, uh, there is a shoulder that's right now is stone and grass, and then it drops off, it's to, within the foot, that's still within the right-of-way or in the fifteen-foot right-of-way, just to put one of those wood guardrails along that one side.
That's to keep it from driving off?
Yeah.
I'm more concerned about it caving in, because it's a sharp drop off.
It's, it's, it's stable, it actually, the top of the shelf goes outside of the property, and then it drops in with those areas.
So, where the bump outs are?
Yeah, we drove it and took pictures of the whole length of it, and that's why we picked those spots. There are some spots, actually, the, where it was cut out at the beginning, it slopes up where, where it goes in. And then, once you get to the table, and then it drops off, and then it narrows in as you get closer to the lot, and there's a fence on either side.
So, you, so how wide will the bump out be?
Bump outs, where the bump outs would be, they'd be fourteen feet, and that would give us a foot to put anything on the right-hand side.
So, you would be adding a three-foot bump out to the eleven-foot road, is that what you're saying, or the bump out itself?
Effectively, six inches on one side perhaps, and then three and a half on another, on the real bump out. The other one, we put it opposite the existing driveway.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so you'd be doing some widening using the other side of the road?
Um, just in the one, in the first one, there's a lawn, there's a lawn area.
Narrow, there's not a lot of room to work with, 'cause the edge of the right-of-way is almost right there.
Even though there's lawn underneath the power line.
It might be like six inches, maybe a foot.
Yeah, in fact, there used to be a dirt road to cut through when they used to have the old house that went through there.
So, within the fifteen-foot right-of-way, you're only going to have at those two points fourteen feet, not, not the full fifteen?
Well, fourteen at the first one, and then the other one is opposite the existing driveway, so.
So, there's some play there, yeah.
Got seventeen feet, and part of it's on their own, you know, the existing driveway.
So, question is, can you make the bump outs, can you elongate the bump out? Instead of just a couple of small spots of bump outs, can you some, somehow elongate those? And then, where you can't do it, then, then make it, then allow it to stay narrow and just, so that, so that's not really, you know, you're not kind of guessing, okay, there's a car coming, I'm gonna, I can move over in this one spot, but I can't, then I can't do it for a while. Maybe elongate more, you know, get more bump out area and less narrow area.
So, for all intents and purposes, it becomes a fourteen-foot wide driveway with a couple of narrow areas?
Right.
Basically, the area that was, was showing the first one, you could make it longer?
I, I would want you to make it fourteen-
Still make it fourteen feet, and in, in reality, you have some lawn on either side that's really outside the, I mean, no one's gonna get stranded there, in reality.
But if you can make it fourteen feet-
As far as we could.
As far as possible.
As far, as much as possible, and if there's a couple of narrow areas. But I also think that you're gonna need that wooden guardrail the whole way down on the right. It's, it drops off very close.
Where we bump it out, we would, would need that guardrail.
But we're asking you to bump it out almost the whole way.
Well, I'm thinking almost in the narrow areas, you might wanna put the guardrail, because if you're toting along, right, and it's at nighttime, and then all of a sudden it narrows on you, you know, you wanna make sure you're not going off the road in those little narrow spots.
Yeah, we could, uh, there's a lot of vegetation and trees that are there that are acting like a natural guardrail as you get further up. And there's a stone wall, and when you get further up to the exact little site. But in the open area underneath the power line, that's where the area that you'd probably need the guardrail more, 'cause it would be more open, there's only small shrubs.
Right.
Uh, there's probably about four or five feet before it drops off.
Maybe a guardrail the whole, the, the wooden guardrail, it can look like a nice fence, you know, the whole way. And you make it as, you make it fourteen feet wide everywhere you possibly can. And then, if it has to narrow in some areas, it narrows, but you still have that guardrail the whole way down.
Uh, we could, we would have to take some trees out to do that, uh, as you get closer to the site, 'cause there are trees on the right-hand side. But the area that's underneath the power line, it's clearly open, 'cause they keep it open. And that area there would be a perfect spot to put that guardrail. Yeah.
There's some poles, we saw.
Yeah, they are.
So, that's where it would narrow, where the poles are, probably. Yeah. Okay, um-
So, do you want my-
Oh, sorry. Yes, I do, yes, I do, Jack.
He used to be the chair.
You know, based upon everything I see, my instinct is to make the Muller Road access safer and not go in Cormier. Police and fire have, neither one have given any strong opposition, except to the possibility of making it a cut through. Otherwise, they're not happy about it, and, but they haven't given a strong opposition. So, uh, my instinct is to stay with the Muller Road access, and if there's any way you can say, yeah, this is the last one more house, we don't want one more, one more time, and then another one more time. If there's, and I'm not sure how to accomplish that, but to the extent we can put up some language to do that, I would love to. And if you can figure out the language, I'd love to read it.
You could give it some thought. I, I think it's a practical matter, I, I don't see it happening. I understand things happen that nobody expects, but.
Thirty years ago, this was impossible, but, or, or people wouldn't do it, but.
Would it be possible for you to mark that, that drive the whole way in, where, how, where you could widen it and, and have little?
You mean on, on the ground or on, on paper or on the ground?
On the site.
On the site.
So, we can go down and see where, where it actually would go, and you would put a guardrail in, and it doesn't have to be anything expensive. You can mark it with yellow tape or something the whole way down.
I guess the point that was raised, though, is what's the value of widening it if we're going to have posts and you can't relocate the posts? That it's not the high transmission line post, it's regular wood utility post.
Regular utility poles, telephone poles.
There's at least, there's at least four.
They're on the-
They're on the right-hand side.
The pond side, yeah.
There are at least four, and they are not very far off the paved.
Do within the fifteen-foot right-of-way?
They are.
Probably. Yeah, you know, what, what, I guess we can commit to doing the best we can within, with, with the limits. And again, I, you know, just remind everybody, it's, it is a driveway, it's not a road, and the only ones that use it are the, maybe the three, if there were three houses, or currently two, the way it's been for fifteen years, and they make it work.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I would like to be able to drive or walk down there and see exactly where, you know, with-
Al said he could post some, put some spikes.
Exactly, that, that's all I'm looking for. Put some stakes in, paint the top of them bright yellow so I can see them. That would be great.
The practical concern from my standpoint is, if you can score here as we're going, um, and it, correct me if I'm wrong, I understand it's a majority vote for the, um, the subdivision approval, but we need a five-person vote for the subdivision waivers.
Yes.
For section six.
No, no, the waiver vote.
Waivers for the subdivision.
The waivers, yeah.
There are only six members eligible to vote, and I've heard at least two of them say they prefer Cormier Road. So, um, as a practical matter, and again, I'm not trying to be fresh, but if, if, if that's the practical reality, frankly, spending time showing aware we could widen Muller Road is, I think, a waste of everybody's time, because you're not gonna have enough votes to get that approval anyway. I'd rather spend my time on the Cormier Road thing, because this, this board's concern is access, and, and, and there are legitimate access concerns on the fifteen-way Muller Road. You've got a forty-foot right-of-way to get out to Cormier, we could put one-twenty-eight in there if we had to. So, we can certainly create adequate access out to Cormier, and if we don't have a practical reality of, of, of getting the Muller Road by doing the things we've been talking about, I'd frankly rather spend my time and try to get this on my clients' just.
My, my, my thought is this, and, and this is, again, and I'm not, not to belabor this, but the Cormier Road problem is, we're having, we're having enough of a problem just trying to widen this, because we think it's gonna be dangerous for the people that live there. Now, if we wi, if we open that thing up to Cormier and we have through traffic going through there, just think about, even if you double the traffic or triple, which is very simple to triple the traffic, 'cause you only have a few houses in there, right?
I agree.
Triple it, quadruple, all of a sudden, you get a major issue. You get people driving off the road, hitting poles in there and things, you know.
You're drawing me.
You don't want through traffic through this.
I, I don't disagree with you, but if, if, if it's the will of the sufficient majority of the board, that that's the way to go, that's the way I'll do it.
Let me ask a question. Um, staff said that you had made a suggestion, Tom, that perhaps there could be access from Cormier Road just to one house. So, you're not, um, on, you're not-
That could be done in such a way that we don't connect with the existing right-of-way.
Right, so then, there's still two houses being accessed from Muller, and one house, the house that's still there, being accessed from Cormier, but it's not a cut through.
If they never join, we're not destroying it by-
Right.
Madam Chair.
So, there would be a gap, there would be a gap from where the Cormier Road driveway came in and where the fifteen-foot right-of-way.
It's just a driveway, it's just a driveway to that last house.
Correct.
Yep.
So, that, I mean, that's, that's an option, and, and my client's prepared to do that if-
So, Tom, so let me ask you a question with that one. How, so, so if you brought Cormier in, right, so you access from there?
Yeah.
So, where would the Muller Road, uh, how far would that then be from the end of the Cormier entrance? The Muller Road, as it exists now, right-of-way, ends where this, this gray area is, right here. As, as been stated, we can't tear that up. No. This right-of-way from Cormier could come in, this is Lot A right here with the current houses. It enters this property right here. And comes over to where the parking area is. So, there's a gap from right here to right about here where it, where it's not- So, what's that, what's that distance? It's gonna be about a hundred, a hundred and twenty feet, a hundred and thirty feet. Okay, and then, and you'd be, and you'd be, you're at, you'd be creating how much, what's the distance you'd be creating as far as the road from Cormier? It would start right here, this is the, this is the right-of-way. It starts here, it zigs here, and it, it enters Lot A right about here. So, it's, it's roughly about, I think it's about three or four hundred feet from here, so it's probably a couple hundred feet.
And then, the fire trucks could get in that way if they had to, to that last house as well, correct?
That would certainly be wide enough to-
Yes.
Yep.
And, and they would- It's, I mean, it's a, it's a viable option. The only thing, you're, you're going between two existing houses, which is disruptive to them, and if we have to, we have to, but-
But it's just a driveway, it doesn't have to be forty feet wide, it's a driveway.
We've talked to the Board of Health informally, um, I mean, we have to go back before them to get their blessing, but we did raise the, you know, maybe make it a gravel way, maybe if that's less intrusive to the neighbors. And from a runoff standpoint, they might prefer that as well, so we'd have to talk with them and-
If it's gravel, can the fire department still get in that way?
This, this, this one here was gravel for about eighty years in total, five years ago, so they can, but, again, maybe, maybe they don't want us to. We'll have to, we have to bring, take that up a little.
It just seems like then you are still, you still have two houses accessed from Muller, not three.
So, we're not increasing that load.
Right, I still think you're gonna need to put the fire hydrant down there, you know.
Yeah, I think, no matter what we do, we agreed to do that, so.
Because then you, you might be-
Be careful, she's being anywhere.
If you open this up, there's a fire hydrant right there to Cormier, so.
Oh, okay.
So, this, this is only gonna provide access to one house?
Yeah.
The existing house at the end.
As a practical matter, that house on Lot A, even if you give it access from Cormier, would still be able to use the other Muller Road and come in the other way, because you can't tear up that road.
Yeah.
But, but it's not creating a cut through.
Yes.
Correct. But as a practical matter, Lot A is probably, you know, for all this time, is used to coming in and out that way. They still will, and we're building a road for no real valid reason.
I think Pinky swear that he won't go that way.
By me?
Paul, you had a question?
Yes, I, I, I mentioned Cormier Road, I don't have a stake in the ground as far as it's concerned. You know, if, if, if it worked out and it was practical, I would say that would be preferable to do that. But if there are a lot of reasons not to, if they just wanna go with the, how many of a hundred-feet, you know, driveway, then, you know, have had it.
I don't, I don't really see the, uh, the need to put down two hundred, three hundred feet, three hundred feet, of impervious asphalt for one house, when, I mean, it, it, they've been using this access right now for two houses, right?
Yes.
They can add one.
Yeah.
That doesn't seem like the straw that broke the camel's back, but-
It was a suggestion, it was not even my idea, I thought it was worth discussing, um, because it doesn't create a, a cut through.
Yeah, I'm sure it's worth discussion.
It's, it's another option.
Yeah.
And-
Make sure you guys use your microphones. No, I'll have to leave early, but she'll watch the rest of the tape. Make sure she can hear you, that's okay.
I know, Al.
So, I, I'm afraid that we're not helping out a whole lot here, Tom.
Well, it's, no, it, it has a bit, but what it's kind of telling me is that, um, unless we re-advertise, which you don't wanna do, Mike's not gonna be able to participate, so there's, there's six potential votes, and I need five of them, and I don't have five.
I'm not sure you don't have five, I'm not sure about that.
If you re-advertized, you'd need six, 'cause it's all but one, for the waivers.
I, I actually am not sure you don't have six. I think Paul was kind of saying he could be convinced either way. I don't know how strongly Bill feels, I, about the Cormier Road access.
I, if you want to comment a little more, so the, the, the house down there is big, it's, it's a huge house. If you've been down there, you turn around, and they've got the two garages in the back. When I, when I went down there, I, you know, kinda, like I said, I couldn't figure out how you could put another house down there with the wetlands on either side. And I kinda, when I was thinking, I'm saying, well, this, this, with the way the house is set up, I go, this, this is a two-family house. So, I'm, I'm, you know, I don't know, you know, looking at the census, who lives there today. But I don't know if there's, you know, you've got the in-law or whatever it is, but you may have already, what we're thinking is gonna be traffic already heading down there. Now, we're, now we're adding to that, so I still have that concern. Is there a way to, although you say you, you can't take away their access there, can we condition it, you know, to do something with a, you know, some sort of prohibitive something to say, this, this house here cannot go down that, it can only go down to the Cormier side, something like that?
Kristin's saying we can't do that, I was wondering.
Keep it, keep it paved, you know, you, you put a swing gate or something down there, you-
I mean, how would you even enforce it?
So, I, I, I think this is, so if you kind of listen to, we're kind of, I'm stepping it higher, a little higher up, and you, you know, say, we're looking for all these waivers, and, uh, when I went down there, I was, again, I'm challenged to figure out how you do this, and maybe this is a spot where you say, you're trying to shoehorn another house in there with the long driveway, with wetlands all around, you know, and, and we're trying to put houses everywhere we can with any particular, but maybe, maybe just this one don't work, you know, as much as you'd like to think.
I am sympathetic to that argument, but the question is, I, am I correct in understanding, Kristin, that if they decide to go out to Cormier, we would not have any, um, reason to deny that?
Well, Cormier, they have a right way that they could construct a twenty-six-foot wide, I mean, they have a forty-foot wide-
Yeah.
Right-of-way, so they could construct-
But they'd still need all the waivers.
Not, if they built a road.
Okay.
I mean, they, they could build a road, and it could meet all of our subdivision rules and regs to go to Cormier, and we wouldn't be able to deny it. I mean, I don't think anyone's looking to build a twenty-six-foot wide roadway with sidewalks on both sides from Cormier to this one house. But they do have that right-of-way up until Lot A, but not to the new lot.
The reason I brought it up is I was, I was trying to answer Bill's question, 'cause I am sympathetic to what Bill's saying, that this, we're just trying to shove something in here that really doesn't belong there, that it's, it's too much. But if they can do it anyway by going out to Cormier, then maybe we need to work with it, to work that, with them, to make it as-
Well, it would be difficult, 'cause if they provided Cormier for Lot A, then you, you know, they could do, they could do everything in the subdivision rules and regs, but, you know, would, would we want them to? Probably not. But, um, then we're left with, this proposed house still has access from Muller Road.
Right.
But it's still, this, it's the same impact than it was, so it's two lots off, off the, the way, so it would be difficult. You could deny it, but then what's the defense? Like, there's two now, there's two tomorrow, what's- there's two now, there's two tomorrow, what's, what's the difference of impact that makes it so much worse? So, so that's kinda where you are with, with Muller. Muller and Cormier.
Yeah, I think, I think we're at work...
I mean, most of the waivers are road, because you're not building a road, so a lot of those, but then when you think of, and we can probably parse out which ones are road and which ones aren't, but I mean, when you think about waivers, is it improving? You know, we don't want, we wouldn't want a full road at Cormier, so that you look at waivers, what are we, what do we need at a minimum? Here, what do we need at a minimum to make it safe access to these sites?
And, you know, where, where I had Carol read back the, the police, it wasn't even approval, 'cause they didn't use the word approval, it was non, you know, they weren't gonna object.
Non-objection.
And I take that as...
That's what they always do.
I, I take that as, no, well, just, I've never heard that kinda language before, 'cause to me, that's clearly not approval, so when I hear, "Well, the police didn't really have an issue," they, they really did, so unless you, unless I guess something say, "I'm really good with that."
The fire department doesn't like it, but they're allowing it, is the way I understood it.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, because if the fire department really doesn't like it, I wish they would just deny it, but they didn't.
So I think it's, you know, upon me, anyway, to say, you know, we've gotta protect the people, not only people that own the house today, or maybe live there today as a two-family, and now adding more onto that, and then the people that, you know, are buying it, you know, 30, 40, 50 years from now, and it may not be the right, the same people, won't be the same people, maybe they're related, maybe not, we've gotta be, you know, I think you said, to protect the people that are coming in and out of there during all sorts of conditions, good conditions, bad conditions, it's, it's, for me, it's very difficult to say this is any sort of safe condition that you're gonna put another house in there, so that's where I'm kinda stuck, you know, and we're talking about bump outs, and, you know, you guys have driven down there, it's, it's, it's not good on a good day.
That's right.
Right, and a light day, and where it's not slippery, and, you know, you gotta put those guy rails up if you guys are thinking of doing that way.
But that's an argument for the Cormier Road exit.
Exactly.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
To Bill's point of the people 30 or 40 years down the road, Attorney Murphy is indicating that they're going to record some type of a agreement between the various homeowners, it would be recorded, so somebody buying the house further, doing a title check, would know that there was some type of an obligation they had, and if they didn't like it, they shouldn't buy the house.
Yeah.
It still doesn't solve the problem of a true safety issue, but...
Yeah, and you guys are lawyers with the real estate, you know how that stuff works with regard to checking out and, and then communicating that to the clients of, that's the way it is, and you have to do that, that's, you're sitting there...
Some people don't run title, I don't know why they buy the house, but...
You're, you're sitting there during, you know, you're, you're closing and you're signing hundreds of pieces of paper, and one of that's one sentence in, you know, the sheets of paper, so that's why I'm not confident...
But no client of Joe and mine would, would be, not get that information in front of...
Sure, but then, yeah, and then your head's spinning, and you're saying, "Oh, I need to, you know, go into this, 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 you know, this agreement that says one of us has gotta do it, maybe..."
One of the couples gets their hearts set on the house, and they're just not gonna let that undo it.
Sure, of course, and then all of a sudden, everything else hits the fan when, when you get a snowstorm and the place is implowed, and you got, you got an ice storm and you can't get down the driveway 200 feet, so I, I think this is very difficult for me to say, "Yeah, let's, let's, let's do that," 'cause I think it's, it's not safe, and I think the police agreed, but for some reason they didn't say no, so that puts us on us to say no.
Well, I think the police, the police only didn't like the cut-through, the fire department's the one that did.
Uh, no, I think if...
Oh, they didn't like the long driveway either?
If we read the, the comments again, I think it's not just the cut-through.
They didn't say yes, and they didn't say no, they...
So that's why I had them read it, I, I had Carol read it again, because it was language in there that really...
The old little word, they demurred, they did nothing.
Was, was, was a no without saying a no, for not just a cut-through reasons.
Yes.
Right. Okay, it would be extremely helpful if the applicants could put up a sign on Muller Road indicating the numbers that are shared in the, in the shared driveway. As for accessing Cormier Road, the applicant would have to understand that they're creating a cul-de-sac that if people realized existed, they could use it to access the middle section mall area. The police department would find it difficult to respond every time someone used their driveway. It is, if it is determined that Cormier needs to be accessed, then a provision should be made to place some type of physical barrier in the middle of the driveway so it is not utilized as a cut-through, which we have been told cannot happen.
So if the police know that they can't do that, now what's, what, can they go back and comment again, or maybe give a glowing acceptance that...
Well, then it says, "We ask that the comments touch on the original proposal with no connection driveway to Cormier Road." Oh, no, this is, this is you, sorry.
I think the police were definitely, the police were definitely against the Cormier Road.
They were against the cut-through, they're not saying...
The fire department...
Fire department.
Tom, in our subcommittee meeting was...
There's language in the police one, from my recall, it was very different language to that.
It was the fire department, and they just, they said, "No, no objection," was, was the word, instead of saying approval or denial.
Mike Hanifin.
But they, he certainly preferred the, of the two, the not the Cormier Road.
Mike Hanifin is police or fire?
He is fire.
Okay, that's, okay.
Both of them preferred the Muller Road access in our subcommittee meeting. Of the two, neither of them were approving the project, but...
The fire department preferred the Muller Road access?
Yes.
Yes.
But normally, we get stuff from police and fire, say, "Approve, no objection."
No problem, yeah.
This just says no objection, it doesn't say approve.
...challenges for emergency responses for the fire department. The narrow road width and setback from Muller Road greatly prohibits proper emergency vehicle access as well as placement, even in ideal weather conditions. In addition, securing a water supply is fairly complicated due to setbacks and apparatus limitations. I'm aware that the applicant has limited ability to improve these conditions, and the addition of one residence will not make the current situation substantially worse. With the following improvements, I will not object to the proposed subdivision.
That's where, that's where I'm focused on the right of...
And then they ask for the signage and the fire hydrant, that was under fire.
I get, I get hung up with that, with the saying...
I will not object.
They will not object, but they're not, if they approve, then I'm good with it, right?
They don't.
So what they've done is kinda put it over to here...
And put it on us.
And I put it on us, and so I said, "If you're gonna put it on me," I said, "This, this is the way, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, because I'm not comfortable when I drove down there," to be honest with you, for not only you folks, but for your folks that are 40, 50 years later.
I wasn't comfortable driving down there in my...
In the daylight.
Little-sized car, I don't have a big SUV or anything, and it was, like you said, in the daytime, it wasn't raining, it wasn't snowing.
So... It's a difficult, it's a very difficult for me to say, "Yeah, this is the right thing to do at this time," right?
So isn't, so, I mean, wouldn't, so my concern, the cut-through...
Yeah.
Wouldn't, that wouldn't be a concern if they came in off Cormier and just didn't connect?
That's right.
Right, so, that, is that an option that they would be open to, or is that...
They're open to anything that will allow them to build their house, and that is obviously an option that, that we've discussed. They prefer not to do that because they don't want inconvenience their neighbors, but they understand that they might have to do that, and if they do, that's what, and frankly, that's kinda what I'm looking for tonight, 'cause I don't wanna just keep coming back here having the same discussion and then get a...
We are too strong.
We gotta fish and cut bait, so if the, if, if, if the sentiment of the board is, we don't have the necessary vote for what we need to go Muller Road, then, then that's what we're gonna do, Joe, yeah. Now, there are other people who would prefer we not do that, but we gotta do one, one way or the other, and...
Well, there's a lot, I mean, my only concern would be that it connect, so I'm fine with it stopping and not connecting, and so I don't care, my thoughts are either way, either widen Muller a little bit more and make it a little more accommodating for one additional house, or come in the other way and just don't connect them up, because I think that, that to me will be the worst-case scenario, is not widening Muller the way, or one off of Muller the way it should be, and connecting it up, because then you're bringing more traffic into a dangerous situation, and it becomes way more dangerous.
Absolutely.
So how, how do the rest of you feel about that?
I agree with Joe and Bill.
'Cause they'd be going down there 40 miles an hour.
Absolutely.
Yeah. They will, especially if they get ways and it's nighttime, they...
Yeah, and they'll drive right off the road, too.
I'll vote either.
Tom's...
All right.
I said, put a sign out front, "Delivery by drone only."
Well, yeah, no, you made a good point with the delivery trucks, 'cause they're, they're not the size of my car, went down there, they're not the size of Barbara's, they're twice the size.
Yeah.
And they're probably, you know, the size of a fire apparatus, which is, you know, from a wet stamp.
I wouldn't wanna drive a big...
What about the size of the construction vehicles when they're building the house?
There's just no way, there's no, I just looked at that, and I said, "There's no way that, you know, that, that, so you can even put a house there," and besides, the construction vehicles, yeah, you're right, it's, it's just gonna be very challenging.
They do have enough uplands for this house.
It depends when you go. If I was there and there was a house, there was water, there was water...
At this point, the people need an answer, because they wanna start construction and don't wanna lose a construction season, so I, I think that we should give them some kind of an answer so they know when they can start.
Before we do that, let's, let me just see if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak about this? Okay, there isn't.
I mean, my inclination, and I appreciate all the input, is, is to go the Cormier Road route, because it'll...
Without the connection?
Without the connection. It's gonna be disruptive to the neighborhood, but frankly, my understanding of this board's function in this type of a hearing is to make sure there's sufficient access, and we can certainly provide that.
Right.
Going that route.
And it doesn't have to be a road, it can be a driveway, so that it's less disruptive to the neighbors.
We can put a sign at the end saying, "Private property, don't enter," that type of thing.
Well, even...
There's already ones there.
You could put some, some barrier of rocks or something at the end, so they couldn't drive through.
At the end, yeah, but I'm, I'm talking...
Oh, you mean at the end, right, right, right.
Just so that no one gets the idea.
You could put a gate with a clicker.
You could just put, "Get in."
Oh, but that's...
Yeah, it doesn't stop people...
But, no, I mean, we could certainly do what we can to make it look like just a regular driveway, and if it doesn't connect, people don't have the right to cut through.
Right.
Like I said, the only downside is that two neighbors are not gonna be happy about it, but if that's what we have to do, we have, that's what we have to do.
Right.
I mean, we're, we're prepared to do that, if that's the will of the board.
Is there anyone on this board that objects to that plan? Because I don't want Tom to go back and make that plan and then have us dispute it, anyone?
I prefer the other way, but I would object.
But you don't object, okay, because I think there are people who object to the other way.
Yeah, exactly.
So...
And that's, that's the practical reality that I'm dealing with.
Okay.
So what I have to do is get before the Board of, Board of Health...
Right.
With that plan, and then we'll circle back to you with my...
Okay, thank you.
It'd be, it'd be really good if, you know, I know that neighbors were notified before, right, with the plan that looked like it was coming out the other way, now the plan's changed, so those neighbors should really be notified to...
There will be, but, I mean, the original plan that was filed showed the right-of-way going both ways.
Oh, did it, okay.
You know, we, we, we had that option, and we addressed it the first way, just because that was already there.
Right.
But the original plan that was noticed, and frankly, both of the Addeeds have reference to the, the right-of-way that goes across their land, so they're aware of it, they haven't shown up to anything so far, so...
They were given a bunch of notices.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Okay, I think you have your answer, finally, thanks for your patience.
So what's left, just the...
Going home.
What, what's left to deal with next week?
I'm going to, I think the next step is for me to get the plan in front of the Board of Health related to the review, or from their standpoint, get the...
Okay.
And then come back to us with a new plan.
To you, once their commentary is...
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Motion to continue this ma, motion to continue this matter, sorry, Noel. Motion to continue this matter to our meeting of May 2nd.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's 6-0, thank you. All right, moving on, I'd like a motion, please, to take item 7G, H, and I together for decision purposes.
So moved.
Thank you.
She needs a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 6-0. Item 7G is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 328 and 330 Cambridge Street, Iconic Capital LLC is the applicant. Item 7H is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to section 7.2.6, increasing the maximum parking space requirements of the zoning bylaws, 328 and 330 Cambridge Street, Iconic Capital is the applicant. And item I is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit, pursuant to section 4.4.1.11, discharge from man-made structures into the wetlands of the zoning bylaws, 328 and 330 Cambridge Street, Iconic Capital LLC is the applicant. Hello.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board, staff, I'm Bill Poyer for the applicant, and I'll let folks identify themselves as they speak, if that's okay, and again, I'd like to extend my congratulations to the vice chair and new chair, congratulations. Want me to just do a little recap?
Um, how about if you try to focus on things that have changed since our last meeting?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
I will do that very quickly. I do wanna say we have had two subcommittee meetings since our last time here, and we were able to address a number of the comments from the neighbors, general public, and the board, I think, at those two subcommittees, and I'm just gonna recap those very quickly. I'm just saying, one of the subcommittees was joint with the Board of Health to help us with drainage, and I, I think that's productive, and I'll announce that a little later, that they're gonna be meeting next Tuesday night on this, so if folks are here and the audience are interested in that, they should know about that and show up, I think that would be very helpful for them.
So Tuesday, the 23rd?
3rd, yes.
7:00 PM.
Yep.
In this room?
So if folks are here and the audience are interested in that, they should know about that and show up. I think that would be very helpful for them.
So Tuesday, the 23rd?
Third, yes.
Seven PM.
Yep.
In this room?
Yes, in this room. So some of the things we were asked about and discussed at the subcommittee, I would say the bigger, the big categories were traffic, pieces of the building, the aesthetics of the building, and then certain mitigation that we were asked to consider. And the traffic issues and parking issues, I would say we were able to address with a new configuration of the driveways, improving vehicular entry and exiting from the site. And Frank will point that out. Sidewalks were a request, and we are willing to do sidewalks along the front of the property and then all the way down Chestnut to Wilmington Road. We have to figure out where, there's maybe some right-of-way issues about if we have enough space on one side or the other, but we are committed to getting that sidewalk done. And hopefully, we can work out the timing. We talked about this. We don't want it to interfere with the project necessarily, meaning we'd like to get started on the project and then to get that sidewalk squared away and built during our construction phase. So I think that will be helpful for some of the comments about safety in the neighborhood and then, you know, the couple of additional trips we're adding. So I think that goes a long way. There is also a reserved parking concept that we agreed to. We would hope that we could get 71 spaces approved now, so six more than the bylaw provision, and reserve 14 spaces. And those would be on the western edge of the site, and Frank can point out where those would be as well. We did find some similar language at the Lifetime Fitness Project and special permit on Wall Street that we saw. And we thought those would be good examples of a way to condition that reserved parking concept. So another couple of things we were asked about was, there's, the town's working on an important project, a sculpture park, and we were asked about contributing to that. And we're happy to offer $5,000 contribution to the sculpture park, if that makes sense. We thought it was consistent with other contributions we had seen from other landowners in town. Jeremy is committed to the town. He wants to be a long-term landlord here, so that's a nice gesture in showing his commitment to the community.
Thank you. Mr. Perea, one of the things, I have a question about one of the things you just said regarding when the sidewalk would be constructed. Could you explain that a little further?
I think the concept would be during our construction of the project.
What I'm wondering is, would the sidewalk be constructed before school starts in September?
This year?
Well, are you going to be constructing over the summer?
I don't think so.
My guess would be, we would, we might start construction in September. So it takes some time to prepare the architectural plans, the site plan for building permit. And my guess is no, we would not be able to do that before September.
If you are having construction going on starting in September, would the vehicles be accessing the site via Chestnut Ave? The construction vehicles?
It's a potential. I would... Building 19 site has limitations. We have to go, because it's a state highway, we'd have to go to the Mass DOT and get an access permit. Typically, Mass DOT limits when you can get into the site for construction vehicles, basically to try to avoid the peak periods of traffic. Again, I can't guarantee that, but that's a typical thing you put in there. So we would have, I think, vehicles probably mostly coming in from Cambridge Street. I think if I was leaving at four o'clock, you know, construction vehicle, I might want to go down Chestnut. If I was going south on Cambridge Street, go down Wilmington, take a left at the light.
What I'm trying to avoid, and I think what the neighbors are going to try to avoid, is we don't want to have construction vehicles going up and down that street when there are children waiting at the bus stop in the morning. I know it happened once to my child when there was construction going on and my kid was standing there on the street corner next to a guy with a jackhammer, and I was pretty upset. These are big construction vehicles. I want to know if there's some way we condition it that we can find out when the school bus comes and we can make sure that those vehicles are not allowed to go up and down Chestnut Avenue while the kids are at the bus stop.
I think that's certainly a condition, if you wanted to limit, I don't know, seven to nine or three to five, whatever the time is.
We'll have to find out what the times are for the kids in the morning and in the afternoon. It's probably not a very, it's not an extended period of time, probably a half an hour in the morning and a half an hour in the afternoon, that we want to make sure that there are no construction vehicles going up and down that street when the kids are there. And then we do want to make sure that the sidewalk is constructed at the same time, not after the project is completed. Fair enough? Sorry, I know I'm jumping in here.
No, no, it's okay.
But before we move on, I did want to just mention that we did receive some letters from neighbors. I don't know if you've had a chance to see them. They have been, they're going to be submitted into the record, correct? We have letters from, trying to see the names on these. From Harvey Abbott, who lives on Alma Road. And...
If they have...
The other one is from Liz, but it's enumerating concerns of another Alma Road resident.
If they haven't been sent to the applicant, then they will be by tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly seen, I think, the Abbott, Mr. Abbott's. I don't know if we've seen the one from Liz.
There was one today, there was one today, one of them was dated today or early yesterday or something. But they will both be sent to the applicant, and they all kind of express similar kind of concerns.
Concerns, yes. So I just wanted to make sure that the writers knew that we've received them. We're going to pass them on to the applicant. They've been entered into the record.
And just one last thing I neglected to talk. There was a request about the MBTA bus shelter.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And we've also explored that, and the applicant is willing to replace that with the MBTA spec as well.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So Frank, you want to just maybe, could Frank just just point out some of the changes on the plan?
Okay.
Very quickly, that's just the aerial, and Sam may use that. Sam Ophiato, our traffic engineer, is here. He's willing to discuss the traffic stuff after this. Phil, how it's along, putting the plan upside down. Sorry. Again, to orientate folks, this is Cambridge Street, Chestnut Ave. This is our site. With regard to the site layout, we've modified the parking spaces. So we're showing the 85 spaces. These are the 14 standard spaces that would be land banked or held in reserve. There are another 71 spaces on the site. Three of them would be the regular compact space, eight foot by 15. There'd be 21 that would be a modified compact, nine foot wide by 15 foot deep. And the remaining 61 would be the standard nine-by-18 parking spaces. So there's been a little bit of a shift in the layout as a result of that. We have this driveway here as one way going out. And again, the discussion here would be, once someone tries to make a left turn at five o'clock at night, they'd realize if they went this way down Chestnut Avenue, if they're going toward Cambridge Street, they'd take a right at Wilmington Road, get into the signal. That's a lot easier than trying to fight traffic. There are six spots here that they could go in and go out, but at this point, it would be a one-way "do not enter" sign. We have gone out, we talked in the last time about some of the Board of Health and the conservation. We did some test bits over here. We have, because we found high groundwater, we've reconfigured the drainage system. So it still fits. It has all the infiltration. We have had discussions with the Subcommittee for Planning Board, Board of Health, and Conservation. I'm going to, that's going to be discussed Tuesday night at the Board of Health. We'll be coming back, talking to the Planning Board and Conservation with the details as to when we resolve that. So I'm not trying to hide things, but it's still up in the air at this point. And beyond that...
Frank, you know, where you were pointing down on the corner, you're talking a percolating system or just a swale?
So we're sort of putting the cart before the horse. We are going, we're proposing an infiltration system here. So the water does not go out. The Board of Health had a concern about the water flowing over the sidewalk and flooding, freezing on Cambridge Street. We are showing an infiltration, leaching catch basin here. Tuesday afternoon, just before the Board of Health meeting, we'll be out there doing a test bit. And we had to do that that late because of, we had to identify with the DCSA folks and stuff, and that was early. So we will know the results of that. That will have an overflow into the drain system, which will be sized, even though this isn't going, it'll be sized to hold all the water from here. So it'll be oversizing our infiltration system. And the idea would be to put this water into the ground here and not to the back of the site. So that's the game plan at this point in time, subject to the test bit and the Board of Health on Tuesday. Really, that's it at this point. Nothing else that essentially has changed at this point. Well, we back up. There was concern the last time with the exposed foundation here. Because of the test bits, we're raising the back of the site at the edge about three feet, a little bit higher retain well here, but that will then block some of this exposed foundation. Still will have the real brick facing on it, so it's going to look nice. And we'll have some landscaping on the edge there. And that's really the changes that were done at this point in time.
Frank, just real quick on that?
Yes.
So I think you went a little too fast for me, so I'm a little slow here. So just from the traffic patterns, so what I understand is that in the evening, it's going to be a right-hand only out of Cambridge Street?
No, that's not correct.
You're going to allow, you're going to allow a left-hand lane out of Cambridge Street in the evening?
My understanding, when we go to Mass DOT, they're going to say that we cannot limit that. So we would allow left and right-hand turns out from Cambridge Street on this location. The idea would be, once you try that and it doesn't work, if you go in south on Cambridge Street, you go at the back way.
What do you mean it doesn't work?
So you may have a long delay getting out here. We're not talking, and Sam can get into the details of the number of trips. There's not a lot of trips coming from the site. But if you're going south on Cambridge Street, you could go all this way down Chestnut Ave, take the turn, this plan might be helpful. Again, this is our site right here, even though that's the existing building. You'd come out here, you could take a left, go to Wilmington Road. And if you're heading to Cambridge Street, you'd take a right turn, then go through the light. That would likely be quicker. It certainly is quicker when I go to La Cacha's and I try to turn that way. I always go this way.
Yeah.
If you go in south on, or north on Wilmington Road, you'd go that way anyways. This way here, again, you certainly could always take a right turn. If you wanted to, you could try to take a left turn. During the middle of the day, I don't think there'd be a problem taking that left turn with the traffic. But during the peak period in the evening, that might be difficult.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is, so there's no way the Mass DOT will say you cannot do a, you can prohibit a left turn there? Because once you try to get to the left turn, you're going to be crossing, you stop. So you're going to be blocking both lanes of traffic. So there's no way they'll let you prohibit that?
They would likely not. Right now, you're allowed to do that. You're allowed to take a left turn coming out of the site. That's sort of a grandfather turn, if you will. And again, I'm, Sam can talk about the traffic. I'm not sure there's enough, from a Mass DOT standpoint, there's enough traffic that that would cause a major issue during the peak afternoon hour.
So I know, Frank, you've been on that road during the peak afternoon hours. That backs up from Bill Rick all the way back.
Yes. And again, I think if you're, after the first few times you come to work here and you find out that it's backed up and you can't get through that, you would go out the back way, which is why we changed that. Originally, we had it going into the site, now we have it going out of the site.
Yeah, okay, so where I'm thinking is, so who, so Mass DOT doesn't let you, will not allow you to put a no-left turn because it's grandfathered? Is that why they won't let you do it?
It thoroughly exists. And again, I think we, I'll have Sam talk about the traffic. We're probably talking about some of the 30 or 40 trips during the peak evening hour that would be coming out, heading south on Cambridge Street.
Thirty to 40?
Thirty to 40, yes, during the whole hour.
So... Okay, so I'm going to let you keep on talking.
Sure, okay.
Because that's, for me, and you go on this street, and I know everyone else does, that... So you're saying if, the first couple of times you try it, it doesn't work, so then I'm going to go around the other way? Okay.
Sure, and again, I'll let Sam talk a little bit more about that. That is the internal traffic flow at this point in time. And again, based upon, I think, what the indications we had received at the last meeting and at the subcommittee meeting. Happy to have any other questions you might have?
Oh, I'm sure we will. Kristin, would you like to weigh in?
I would, I can weigh in, but I would actually first recommend that we hear from the traffic engineer, Sam Ophiato, because we haven't yet.
Okay.
And that might bring up some more comments and...
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, it just, as we get closer to 11, a lot of us start to... I'm not going to waste your attention when you need it for...
See why, I'm site engineer, and Sam is a traffic engineer in a minute. Get space.
Good evening. My name is Sam Ophiato, our traffic engineer with the BSC group. Thank you. And I think Frank talked a little bit about the access in and out. I think he might have misquoted the numbers getting in and out of the site. For, we did a traffic count on Cambridge Street, and there are about, over the course of the day, there were 19, close to 19,000 vehicles a day on Cambridge Street. Actually, compared to some previous numbers, it seemed to have gone down. But this site, based on the trip generation rates that we use, which is the traffic standards that we use for analysis for a government office building, in the course of a day, we expect around 486, 480 trips over 24 hours. So that is the daily trips. During the morning, you have about 72 trips total, about 54 vehicles, trips coming in and 18 exiting. And then in the evening, there's actually 37 vehicles total, nine coming in and 28 exiting. So it is not 37 coming out and making the left. It's a total of 37 trips in and out of the site. And based on the distribution, which is, we looked at how, we already called the census data for journey to work, data how people currently come to Ballinton and also where the various municipalities are, how they access the town, and also the travel patterns on Cambridge Street. We show that, actually, I'm just be sure I'm giving the right numbers here, because I think it's a PM that the concern is being raised. So on that, the two access exit points are from the site. On Cambridge Street, we are showing that in the evening, you're going to have 16 vehicles coming out of the site, 10 making the right, heading north on Cambridge Street, and six making the left, heading south on Cambridge Street. And then 13 vehicles would exit onto Chestnut Avenue. And then the 12 of those vehicles will head towards Wilmington Road, six. So you have 12 exiting on Chestnut, making the left onto Wilmington. And out of that 12, six will head north on Wilmington Road into Wilmington and Tewksbury. And then six will make a right and head towards the signal. So it's only about six vehicles that are actually going to be coming out to make a left onto Cambridge Street in the evening. So it is not a very significant number, actually, and that would create any problems there. With respect to the difficulty coming out of the site, I think if you look at the numbers, actually, that will be coming out of the site to make a left. It is actually less than the number today making a left from Chestnut Street, making a left onto Cambridge Street. Because people still take a left from Chestnut Street onto Cambridge Street. It's a similar number that's happening today. So it is not anything different. And I think what Frank was alluding to is, if you were coming out and, I mean, you realize that maybe it's difficult to make the left, there's an alternative access where you can use, go around the building and then come out on Chestnut Street and use it. So it is not one act, I mean, exit out of the site. So you have that choice to make.
Can I just stop you there for a second? Sorry, do you mind, Ms. Chair?
Please.
So if, what I understand is you're saying in the evening, there's going to be 37 exiting?
No.
Okay, I got that wrong.
It's 37 total trips associated with the site.
So in the evening, you're saying...
So you're going to have nine entering and 28 exiting.
In the evening?
During the evening, peak hour.
Yes, peak hour, yes, one hour, yes.
One hour, you're saying, in this, you know, Ernie, you showed me the layout, there's 75, 80 desks, right? 75 or 80 desks in there, and there's 70 parking spaces. And you're saying, in the, the peak exit is 28 people leaving in an hour, let's be between five and six? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, it could be between four and five.
Four, five, peak, so... And if I understand the use, it's a state government building?
Yes.
Well, it's an office.
State office building?
Yeah.
Is anybody familiar with kind of the hours that they run? If you know people that work for the state?
They all leave at the same time.
They all leave at the same time. They're all leaving, they're all leaving at that peak hour, all of them. So I think, can you, can you relook at the traffic with that in mind?
I think, um...
Not really. Everyone is, you know, if you know people who work for the state and it's a state office buildings, it's... I'm not saying anything, but it's just, it's, I'm just kind of reality checking.
Bill is speaking for me, because I have the same questions, so, you know.
So maybe you can redo the traffic study with 70...
Bill, could you ask one question first? Is that office buildings' peak hour the same as the roadway's peak hour?
Yeah, good point.
Yes, based on the IT, it tells you that the, so this analysis is based on the peak hour of the adjacent roadway. So it is the same peak hour. But it's four to six, if you look at the time, how people leave. So if you have 28 leaving, let's say between, say, 3:30 and 4:30, or even four and five, you still have another number leaving. So you're not emptying the whole office at the same time. I mean, you might look at the number of desks there. And also, don't forget that you have a transit stop here, too. That wouldn't even take that into consideration. But it's all based on standard counts, you know, at different offices across the nation. And that is what the numbers came out to be. And I do agree that, yes, sometimes you see, I see everybody's leaving at the same time. But it's not just the total number of desks in the office that is really going to be equated to the number of trips.
There's, and there's also a certain amount of folks that won't be at work on any particular day or at that particular time. People leave early for, you know, family events, medical appointments, so it's not... I think it's fair to assume that every single employee or desk is going to be exactly that, leaving at that time, so. And I think we have to rely on...
I'm just trying to get accurate, and those kind of maybe even worst-case numbers for to understand what we're having against.
And I think one other point I wanted to make was that we're looking at Cambridge Street. When I say that Cambridge Street carries about, close to nineteen thousand vehicles a day, what we should also understand is a certain number of these people are already on Cambridge Street. That they're going to, they're not necessarily going to be new trips onto, on Cambridge Street, that they are there already on Cambridge, going to other places. And if they happen to work here, it's just a matter of diverted trips, so they're already there. So it's not gonna be that many trips. And if you look at the analysis we did, at the various intersections, the level of service honestly didn't change. And if you look at the analysis closely, it didn't change at all. We looked at Francis Wyman and Cambridge Street, and we looked at Wilmington Road and Cambridge, and then Chestnut and Wilmington, and then Chestnut and, and Cambridge Street. So, and the level of service didn't change, because the incremental difference in traffic, compared to what is on the road, it's not high. And, and it, the level of service didn't change, in terms of delay, it didn't change.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
May I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
At the Science Museum at one time, they had, it was almost like a game, a display, of cars going around and, you know, streets coming in and so forth. And so they started, you're going around, and then they add one car from here and one car from there. And they're still going around pretty good. But you get to a point where you add one more car and the whole thing stops.
Q theory, yeah, yeah.
And so, you know, if you wanna hear what people complain about in Burlington, because I'm around town almost every day, the one thing is traffic. And I'm wondering if this incremental number, how many people work in the building?
Seventy-five to eighty.
Seventy-five, you'd say? What, what seventy-five or eighty, how much that incrementally might contribute to locking that up?
Yeah, it's not linear. The, the Q theory is it's, it's nonlinear. So every time you add one, it exponentially goes up. So you just, you can't...
I don't use big words like that. No, really. That's all I could think of when he was talking about this, because you do get a point. Where you add one or two more cars and the whole thing is, you know, it just stops.
But it's, you know, it's, it's over time that we have to look at it. It's not, it's not accurate to say that everyone's leaving at the same time.
I think if...
Well, if I stand there, which I have for many hours, with a sign, looking, you do get the traffic. You can stand there at eight-thirty and get a certain amount of traffic, and you're standing there at nine-ten, and it's completely different.
That's our point, it changes over time, it's...
Well, I think that was Bill's point. If they're all leaving at the same time, and you're looking at one peak hour, four to five, and the other five to six, but they're all leaving between four-fifty-five and five-oh-five.
That's a problem.
A problem.
And, and I know with...
The math fails you.
With other businesses, like Oracle, they have people working from home, and they have flexible hours. And some people come in at six, and some people come in at nine or ten. Usually with the government office, everyone comes in at the same time, and they leave at the same time. It's not the same as more like high-tech businesses where people have different schedules.
I mean, I'm not sure...
Is there any reason for us to think that this particular government office has flexible work hours?
Well, we have, we have been told that they have staggered hours coming and going. And there's also a certain amount of people who have appointments out of the office during the day. So, you know, they're not, they're, it's, it's, I don't think it's accurate to say they're all coming at nine, they're leaving exactly at five.
Could we find out what their staggered work hours are? That's something that, you know, we've done with other businesses like Oracle, who explain to us how their, how their employees come and go, and, and different percentages of people come in early or late.
Wasn't at the meeting with the Board of Health, Ernie and Bill were there with me, that it was described as a nine-to-five office, a nine-to-five function?
That was meant to be...
It was a description, it wasn't necessarily their hours. Could you tell us what their hours are?
Yes, well, we will get those for you.
So what, what might be interesting for me to even kind of go a little deeper on this was, and I don't know if anybody's willing to share what agency it is, but...
We have asked.
Right, so I think that's very important, if, for my aspect, is do a little more homework, because they, they must be located somewhere today. And they're gonna relocate to this particular site. So if, if that's the case, then I can do a little bit more homework and say where they're located today, and I'll go camp out and say, you know, how many people they have there, when they come in and when they go, and I'll take a vacation day and do something like that, because I think it's really important.
Well, we have asked.
So I don't think, if we don't have that information, you know, then we assume...
Well, maybe Sam can go and do a count at that location, if they're not willing to disclose to us who they are and where they are.
They gave us a reasonable explanation, I thought, of why they're not going to disclose.
Actually, Ernie, I, I think we might ask Attorney Poyer to give that explanation, not just for the members who have received your letter, but for people who are watching and for the neighbors, because there are concerns.
Yeah, and it's not anything unusual that a lot of my private clients that are relocating businesses or opening new offices, it's just, it's disruptive. The employees don't know about it yet, the vendors don't know. And it's not even certain, because, you know, we're going through this process. So it's really that. There's a, there's always a number of folks who are looking or leave the position before the employer has a chance to discuss options with them, things like that. So that's the main reason. I mean, I can just tell you it's an office use. So telling you the name of, of, you know, the tenant isn't really gonna change that. It's still an office use as defined under the bylaw, it's a professional office.
Even the mall reports, you know.
I mean, there must be, there must be many times where in a multi-tenant building that gets permitted, you don't know every single tenant at the time, but you know the uses that are gonna be there. So it doesn't seem that unusual to me.
Well, it's unusual, in a sense, when you, when you're dealing with traffic matters, that we can't...
Joel, get the microphone, so Noel can hear it.
When you're dealing with issues like this, where we know that there could be potential problems with the traffic, if, it would be very helpful for us to know what agency or what entity was gonna go in there, because then we would be able to have assurances that, you know, what you're telling us is correct. And, you know, I'm not saying that you're not gonna give us correct information, but we, you know, if I give you a dime for every time we didn't get correct information over the past thirty years I've been on these boards, you know, that we have to verify, and we have to make sure, you know, it's, it's gonna be as true as it was presented to us. You know, so, yeah, I mean, if, if, if there was no traffic issues at all here, you know, and we weren't even close to being up against the wall traffic-wise, then maybe it's not a concern, but, you know. I don't want surprises, you know, and I, I don't, and I get it, you know, but the bottom line is, you know, you know, what, telling the board that you're permitting in front of what agency it is, you're not, you're not saying who's moving from where, you're just saying what agency it is. You know, you're not saying where they're coming from, or, you know.
How, how is that related to the traffic? Because it's still just an office, I just don't understand.
It's an office, but every office has different policies. Every office has different policies. We just told you, you know, we, you know, Oracle, who, you know, they have flex hours, and they're coming and going, they're doing this and doing that. Other offices have people on the road all day long. Other offices have, you know, they may have fifteen people working there, but those fifteen people are in and out all day long with their vehicles, right? Other people have fifteen people that are working there, and they get in there and they park there once, and then they leave once at the end of the day. So, yeah, it, it absolutely has an impact on what kind of traffic, you know, coming and going is gonna happen all day in that building.
Okay, that's fair enough, so...
Do you want to make a suggestion? Since you have difficulty disclosing who it is, but you know Sam could go to their existing office and do traffic counts, and come back with them.
I was gonna offer something like that. If we understand the concern...
We don't need to know who they are, but we need to know their trip frequency and their rates and times. And I think that's the information we need.
Yeah, yeah, once, if we know where they are, we can count them, yeah.
You don't even, you don't even have to tell us where he's going.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I said, you don't even have to tell us where he's going.
And we'll come up with all that, the other request you made about what their policies for, you know, staggered hours and typical vacancy rates and things like that in the office.
But I would presume that's the same now as it would be. The, the constant would be whether employees come and go.
And, and another piece of information that I think would be helpful to know is the number of outside visitors that are coming on a daily basis to the office for meetings or whatever.
That may be hard for him to figure out, because he doesn't know why someone's coming in and out.
No, no, I'm not asking for the traffic, for the traffic engineer to provide that. I'm asking for Attorney Poyer to provide that. He can presumably ask the client, or the, the tenant, I should say.
I mean, I can probably get some historical feedback about that.
Yes, thank you.
I'm, I'm told it's, you know, a handful a day typically.
You know, are they servicing people who come, you know?
They're saying...
It's not a... Yeah, it's not, it's not a consumer, you know, retail kind of government office, like a registry or anything like that. It works like, like, we had a meeting yesterday, a subcommittee meeting, similar to that. There'll be, you know, matters that people have before the agency, and they'll have an appointment to go. Occasionally, the employees will go to a meeting outside of the office. So it's very typical office operation.
Thank you.
But I'll try to get as much of this data that I can get that will be helpful. I understand what you're, what you're getting at.
It might be helpful as well, because I know we've had a lot of the comments that have come in and the questions are, are kind of this confusion about what the, the use is and isn't. And it might be helpful to talk through the floor plan and a little bit of just the, the basic points of the memo that Attorney Poyer put together for the watching, the general public might be watching, if they're still awake.
Yeah, it's, again, it's laid out like a typical office. There are cubicles where people will work, I mean, and there's, you know, conference areas where people have meetings. There'll be some trainings at some point. Again, not different than most private offices.
Trainings of employees or other training?
Yes, employees, employees, yeah.
Do you have on a board that layout of the office? Frank? Is it in this plan?
It's on our website, I'm sure, but...
And then what, what there, things that aren't there. There's no, I know there was talk about maybe some law enforcement functions that's not there. There's no detention areas, no law enforcement, there's no medical use or medical spaces in the building, no labs. I mean, it's, it's literally office space and meeting space within an office building. There's no, like I said, there's no retail function, like a registry or a tax office or employment office, where you can just walk in, a member of the general public could just walk in for service. It's not that kind of office at all.
It's not a training center where other agencies will come to train in that location? No reason for anyone other than the employees to be there all day long?
Employees and members of the public, like, that would have business with that office. Again, like if Frank would go down to District Four for a meeting, or, again, we went to the subcommittee meeting yesterday. That kind of by appointment-only sort of office.
So we had them put it up on the board. It's really small, but if Becat wanted to zoom in, there is an option on the board.
And perhaps we could give one to, are there audience, are there audience members that would like to see this? You have, okay.
I make a move that we go beyond eleven o'clock?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're allowed to vote on that.
Just to be official.
Seven, zero, we're going past eleven. Before we go too much further, because the hour is getting late, I'd like to take things a little out of order and invite the neighbors, if they would like to speak, to come forward, one at a time. Come forward and, and use the microphone.
Could you guys give them a seat if they want to sit? I didn't mean vacators.
So please, please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Harvey Abbott. You mentioned my name earlier.
Is that mic on, Josh?
Liz.
Is that mic on?
Is this mic on?
Yes.
It is, thank you.
My name is Harvey Abbott, I live on Alma Road, I've been there since eighty-two. I spoke to Liz this afternoon, she was wonderful, very helpful, cleared up a lot of my concerns. I still have some others. I'm happy to be here tonight, and I have basically five talking points I'd like to speak to. I can bring up one, we can discuss that one, or I can go through all five, and we can discuss it however you prefer me to do this.
Let's do one at a time.
All right, that's fine. And they're, they're kind of in, in order of importance, least important to most important at the end. By construction, these are my concerns. I don't wanna see any weekend work going on. There should be no evening work, the town has noise ordinances. No work before seven AM or after six PM on weekdays. No construction vehicles or workers' cars parking on Alma Road, my street, our street. The town must monitor and enforce the noise ordinances. We have a contractor that lives behind us, he pays no attention to the noise ordinances, the town does not enforce it. He's out there with his bobcat at six AM on a Sunday morning. I will not stand for more of that. Okay, so that's the issue on construction. Safety. We've got a mix of construction vehicles, an MBTA bus stop, as you mentioned, a school bus stop, residents going and coming to work, running errands. I would expect police to be on site to manage the traffic, all of that extra traffic during construction, at least one officer, because I think it's gonna be gridlock, I honestly do. That's number two. Number three is just questions, at this stage, I don't think we have answers yet.
Okay.
Where will the MBTA bus stop be during construction? I assume the same spot. I don't want it backing up towards Alma Road and blowing its fumes into the neighbors' yards. That happens too much as it is. We cannot allow buses parking closer to Alma Road or the school bus stop, which is on Alma Road. We have to find out, of course, where the MBTA bus stop will be after construction, but that's, we can find that out later.
I, I don't think there's any plan to move the site.
No, and that's what I've gathered from looking at the, the website and what I've been able to dig up my own.
Okay.
Issue number four is Chestnut Ave, Alma Road, and traffic in general. Access to Chestnut Ave for Alma Road residents must not change. Some of us have lived there forty-five, fifty years, we've heard talk that we will not be able to turn right coming out of Alma Road onto Chestnut Ave to head north towards Bill Recker. I hope that's incorrect.
To my knowledge, that is incorrect.
All right, good, that's good, that's good. That's, like I said in my email, some of this is rumor, I'm just trying to clear up.
This is a, a, an office use coming into the site. They don't have the ability or the authority to change the traffic flow at all.
That's, this meeting helped me understand the traffic flow rules a lot better, so I'm glad I came very much. So I would like to see at the entrance to Alma Road, because whenever we have, we're all familiar with La Crosse's, we all go there. You can tell I go there. And every time there's a holiday, people are parked down Alma Road, ten deep, on both sides.
Down Alma Road, really?
Because there is no parking in, in La Crosse's parking lot. So I'd like to see, first of all, a dead-end street sign, so that people new to the area from this office building don't go down Alma Road thinking they can get anywhere. That's gonna increase traffic problems. And possibly a residence-only sign on Alma Road as well. Residents-only parking, I don't know if that's possible, I don't know if we do that in Burlington. But you're gonna have a double problem whenever there's a holiday. I don't know about the overflow that's gonna happen at the building yet, the building is my item number five. But I am concerned about the traffic flow and people going down Alma Road when it's not clearly marked as a dead end. It should be, honestly.
I would think the dead-end sign or the not-a-through-street sign might be easier to get than the residents-only parking, because I'm not sure we're allowed to do that.
There will be new people in the area that don't know Alma Road doesn't go anywhere.
Right, and you don't want them wandering around looking for a way out.
Right, exactly, exactly. And then we come to the building itself. I'll be very honest, I'm very concerned that this is so secretive. I am very concerned, and I, I sound, it sounds like other people share my concern.
So not the building, rather the use, or the tenants?
The usage of the building.
The tenant that you're worried about?
I did some architectural drafting in my Mass College art days, so I can read site plans pretty well. And they were very well done, and I can see that it's a pure office space with conference rooms. Looks like my building, looks like where I work. But again, I expect this to be an office building, as we've been told. I expect, and I've heard a little more clarify... I expect, and I've heard a little more clarity from that, and I thank you guys for that, gentlemen, thank you very much, that there will be more than employees who work there. There'll be other people coming to do business with that agency, whatever that agency may be, and they will enter and exit during the day, in addition to the employees entering and exiting during the day. So I've gathered a little bit more information on that, that there'll be more people going out of the building than just employees.
Right, and we're looking for more information on that as well.
Right, absolutely, and that's what I see, more information on that. A heavy flow of customers or visitors throughout the day, that concerns me. It should concern all of us. I don't know what the traffic studies are. I'm glad that, is it, is it William?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Bill Gaffney. We appreciate him too.
Accounts of the existing facility and what the traffic flow looks like there might be very helpful, because you might also be able to see who comes in and out during the day at 1:00, at 3:00, at 4:00, non-employees, because it sounds like it's a part of the government, part of the state bureaucracy that people will come to visit for whatever reason. Could be, I'm not asking what it is yet, by the way.
Right, I think that, you know, for any office use, people come for meetings, as you know, but that is one of the pieces of information we've requested.
I have to go to the salt and salt building myself anytime. I don't, there were rumors of what the site was. I think that's been alleviated, thank you. You clarified that. A lot of people were concerned that it was a halfway house or something of that nature. I don't think that's the case. So concerns we might have had about strangers wandering the neighborhood during their breaks, I don't think that's, I was worried about that. But I want to make sure that there aren't people entering and coming to work at 6:00 a.m. or 5:00 a.m., because this is, it's a very, it's a very small pocket of an industrial location in the middle of residential area all around. It's like an industrial zone was dropped into a residential area. I don't know how it ever evolved that way, but it did. So I'd like to see that this building operates during normal hours. It sounds like it will. It sounds like there will be people coming maybe 7:00, 7:30, maybe 6:30 into work, going into their offices, exiting, some leaving early, like I do, some working from home sometime. I understand all of that. I'm lucky to be able to do that once in a while. You don't want to do it all the time, it's boring. My main question when it comes to the building, aside from the disclosure of who the tenant really is, is, I'm doing the math and it said 85 pocket spaces in total, but the numbers for the trips in the evening were 40, if I've heard that right.
That's 40 in one hour.
Forty in one hour.
I think you said 37.
I thought, 37, I heard 37 as well. And I'm doing the math in my head and I'm saying, all right, 85 minus 40, or maybe 85 minus 37, where's the other 40? Where's the other 38, whatever the number may be.
In the next hour, 10 minutes later.
Or is that, are the other 85s, are half of the 85 spaces for visitors that are going to come in and out all day long? That's what I'm not sure of. That's why I couldn't understand the math.
If you look at the number of cubicles, they need the 70-something spaces for just the employees.
Right, but your question kind of goes to what Bill was saying. We need to find out if, in other businesses, normally you would expect that they don't all leave at the same time.
Right.
But with a government agency, it seems, most people seem to think that there's a higher likelihood of people leaving in a smaller condensed period of time. So that's one of the things we need to find out.
Oh, thank you. And I don't want to sound like I'm against it. I've lived there since 82, and I'm sick of sitting on my deck and looking at the eyesore of a blue building. I'll be glad to see it gone. Anything you put up is going to be better than that. I just want to understand what's happening, make sure the town and the residents are properly taken care of, and make sure we're safe.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Can I just weigh in on the no parking along Alma Road and the dead-end street signage? This board doesn't control the roadways and.
Understood.
No, no, I just want to make sure that you know that if you go to the Board of Selectment or submit a request to the Board of Selectment, what will happen is it'll go to a Staff Traffic Advisory Committee for which some, which I sit on as part of our department, to review the request and give comments to the Selectmen on a potential dead-end street or no parking and make sure it's, you know, the signage is compliant with state signage regulations. But that's where to start on those two issues.
Thank you.
So I would start there, because through this, we can't make that change.
No, no, I'm not asking.
But we recognize the issue, but want to direct you in the right place in order to effectuate some of that discussion and change.
If the building happened to have too many visitors one day and there's overflow, which happens at Lakash's all the time, I know we're out parked on Alma Road.
Yeah, and I will say, no parking except for residents is super hard to enforce.
Yeah.
So I know the police department has been.
I'm a little above on that one.
Yeah, has been kind of scaling back, but anyway, they've reasoned, we've had a lot of reasonable discussions about parking in residential zones.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, it's possible you could do a no parking, but then even. Although when you have friends come over, that might be tough.
If you do it for a certain amount of period for the front of the street.
That's true. Maybe just the first.
Usually deters people down further and then it doesn't really, residents don't mind.
Yeah, you're right, okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Welcome.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
T R E V E T T, in case you can't spell it, which nobody can, to Alma Road. There's been all kinds of scenarios on what the hell's coming in here. Now, I don't know about you guys, but this whole road is, got all rumors of what it is. Now, you said some type of a government agency. Whoopie, there are all kinds of government agencies, and I've been dealt with a lot of them, okay? Are we going to have a bunch of security guys on the outside? This has also been noted as, or rumored as, it's going to be a drug rehab. Oh, you think I want more drug needles out there? I've seen some and I found them and I called the cops. Now, I call cops unless there's anything fake going on, there's funny going on. I am very protective of my family. I am very protective of my grandchildren. And there's nothing we know about this facility. Oh, who's going to be there? And if you're asking us to accept it, I'm blind? Oh, whoopee dang, you told me something. It ain't going to happen. And if it happened to any one of you people, I bet you'd be up in front of the board.
I think we all share your desire to know what the agency is.
I damn right do. I've had all kinds of security classes. I know what goes on in some of these buildings. I want a name at least.
I understand your concern, and it's something that we are working on. We do know that there is no medical facilities, it's not.
A drug rehab.
Can't be drug rehab, there's no medical facility at all. It's not going to have a high retail use, so in other words, not a lot of people coming in and out. These are the things that we have been told, and until we know the name of the actual agency, I think there are things that we're going to have to try to condition somehow to make sure that these things don't happen, but we can see from the layout that it's an office.
Well, let's put it this way. I've worked for some people that have all these protesters out front, anti-war, and you couldn't even get to work. And I don't want anything like that in my neighborhood. My grandkids come here all the time. They're playing outside all the time. We got other kids on the street. And this is, we have no way of knowing what the hell's going to happen. And I can't see that any provisions have been made on it.
You know, I share these thoughts, as far as I'm concerned, the negatives outweigh the negatives of your employees thinking they may have to move to another location. I, you know, this is not a normal circumstance. This is not a commercial in the middle of a commercial area. This is a commercial in the middle of a residential area. So you can see the concerns that these people have. They're the same concerns that I would have, and I think everybody on this board would have. Your concern is, I don't want to make the employees feel bad that they're going to be moving in the future. Well, the reality is that somebody's going to crack that to them at some point in time, right? So I don't buy that. I don't, I'm sorry. I feel like there's a concern, and it's a legit concern, and we have a legit concern that, you know, there's so many different things that we need to look at from our standpoint depending on the type of office use it is. You can't just say it's an office use. There's too many different office uses out there, and we're, we are given the, you know, the obligation of protecting neighborhoods. And this is a neighborhood, you know? So I, for one member, don't feel we should go on without understanding who this agency is. That's my feeling on it.
And it seems to me that it would be possible for you to answer that question without getting the word out to all the people that work there, because it's something that you could share with staff that could then share it with the rest of us, and it would not necessarily have to be at a televised meeting that the name was revealed.
If it's a public record, I mean, I don't think you can keep it secret, honestly.
I wasn't suggesting I keep it secret, I'm just saying it would not be likely to get out, because not all that many people read our meeting minutes.
Well, so an employee, they're still an employee, right? So if their agency is thinking about relocating, they got to know at some point in time, right? So I don't understand the secrecy, even the whole process that you're going through to keep it secret.
Look, I'm just.
They're still an employee of the state, so what are they going to, quit? Because they may be relocated somewhere?
Quit or transfer, yeah.
Yeah, well, you know.
I'm just telling you.
My suspicion is that this, my suspicion, Joe, is that the 70 employees there, one or two of them already know, and it's only a matter of weeks before the rest of them know.
I just, I feel like there's too much at stake with not knowing, and there's so very little at stake to your agency to, if it does become known.
I get your point, and I understand. I will try to get whatever disclosures I can get.
And you can tell you.
But I can tell you, even if I told you the name, if I knew, I, it's still an office use, so it could be, pick a state agency, pick the MBTA, it's still just an office use.
I think the point is though.
Pick the Department of Revenue. I mean, I don't know.
I think the point is if you were able to reveal the name, it would set a lot of fears to rest for the residents and therefore would make your job a lot easier.
Yeah, I don't know.
Chair, if I can just, so I think, for me, it's more of a traffic issue in addition to that. I think, based on the layout, it is clearly an office use, but I think to remember Kelly's point, these people aren't going to quit. They work for the state. If you know people that work for the state.
They can ask to transfer.
They're going to, you're going to keep on working there. But from what I can tell here, it's the question I may have to ask, just to kind of go down a little bit deeper, is this a current, is this a current office that is relocating or is it a central office for multiple divisions? Do you know the game show we used to have? So this is what I'm trying to get it here. So as you go down and try to figure out, so is it an existing office somewhere else that's relocating, or is it becoming a kind of a central office for the executives? Because there's some big offices here.
I think it's a combination of relocating.
So you don't really know what it is? You don't even know?
That's scary.
I know it's an office, and I know it's relocating certain people and trying to cover an area that doesn't have sufficient coverage.
Okay, thank you.
Could you, you know, there are so many divisions in state government. If it's security, that's one thing. If it's finance, it's something else. If, you know, it's people that are working for legislation is something else. So I think if we had a general idea, that would be helpful, because we have buildings that people are marching around in Burlington now. So, and those were not revealed to us. Even in the construction, we were told there was going to be a carport, and it wasn't a carport, it was a secure location to bring prisoners in and so forth.
It was a Sallyport.
Sallyport, yeah, thank you, yeah. So that's, it's helpful for us, it would be helpful, I think, if we even got a category so we could reassure people, you know, that this isn't an agency that's going to have to be armed and that kind of thing.
It's not a law enforcement or security kind of agency, like the state police, for example. It's not like that at all. So I understand, I hear what you're saying.
I think you got the message. Are you going to go back to your clients? You're going to tell them that things are going to go a lot more smoothly if you are allowed to reveal who the tenant is?
Yeah, I mean, I would just want to say that it is, office is a byright use in the district, so I, I mean, I don't want, you know, I think it's at least fair to understand that. It is an IG zone, and that is one of the byright uses. And it's, you know, people take that to mean that's a preferred use there. I mean, it doesn't even get the level of a special permit, so, I mean, it's.
Well, it is, but even, there's not a scenario, there is not an application since I've been on this board that we haven't considered traffic flow, even in byright uses, right?
Right.
So we need to understand what the traffic flow is going to be, right? We need to understand what the use is going to be, even, you know, in that case when, you know, where there was a facility, it wasn't even that necessarily was the big problem, but it happened to be a controversial facility. So those controversial facilities tend to have protesters outside, you know? These are things that we need to understand, because it's right in the middle of a neighborhood, right? So.
Protesting is, you know, it's not a controver, I mean, I.
Right, well, you don't even know what it is.
Well, because what you're describing is.
You're being told something, and I don't know.
Well, that might be part of the problem. Someone might think it's controversial because they don't like it. Like, I don't like ExxonMobil, right? So I wouldn't maybe want them in an office building. I don't like what they do, even if it's just an office building.
I would be, and I'm just being honest, I would be 100% more comfortable trusting what you're saying to me if you knew what the use was. So I, it's not that I don't trust you, it's just that you don't even know what the use is.
I know what it is.
How can I get the answer?
I know it's an office. I know what it is.
Well, I know that this, I mean, everything's an office, right? I mean, everything's an office, so that means nothing to me.
No, not, no, everything is in an office.
Let me interject here. I think we're not going to, we're not going to resolve this tonight. We've asked Attorney Poyer to go back and ask if he can reveal that information to us. It doesn't really pay for us to go over and over it tonight, but it's not going to be an answer tonight. So let's see if there are any other issues regarding the site that we need to go over tonight so that we can move forward. This isn't going to get voted on tonight. We're still, this is also going to Board of Health, correct?
Yes.
So what other things do we need to cover, Kristin, so that we can make some progress and then head on?
On this, I don't know if the gentleman's standing.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you have anything else you wanted to ask, sir?
Well, I had one little thing.
Yes.
I'd be very surprised if any one of you people on this board would have a warm and fuzzy feeling having this happen to you in your neighborhood.
Well, I think you.
I'd be very surprised if you would.
I think you've heard us ask for the information, and we now have to wait and see if Attorney Poyer can get back to us.
Bye.
Thank you, sir. Kristin, what else do we need?
So I just wanted to confirm, Attorney Poyer brought up a couple kind of offers that, and discussion points that we've talked about, about the sidewalk across the front edge of the site going to Wilmington Road, the sculpture committee donation at $5,000, the reserve parking Frank went through, and the bus stop. I know yesterday we talked about the bus stop.
We also need to talk about the construction of the sidewalk, correct?
Yes, but did you figure out if you were going to replace? I know there was a preference to pay for this bus stop being replaced, but have you had any further discussion about that?
Since yesterday.
Since yesterday?
Yeah, I haven't been able to, I will.
Anyway, we, there's the new bus stop style that they have been inquiring with. No, that's okay. There are bus stop style that have been put in place at the district, on Burlington Mall Road in the district, at Northwest Park. There's one other. But that style, bus stop, to be in the same place that it is now, as mentioned, the buses do come in and kind of pause there for a minute. They're not supposed to stay there for a really long time period, but they do come in and kind of pause up on Chestnut. So we assume it'll be in the same place. In the timing of the sidewalk, we talked a little bit about it yesterday. We all agree we want the sidewalk done with the CO, but there's a couple items between just different approvals and then any approvals from the state along the front edge. So what I mentioned to Attorney Pryor yesterday is let's try to figure out what that criteria's going to look like so we all meet our goals, but also understand what if these things happen. So we're working on that so to make sure that, you know, things happen.
When I said construction of the sidewalk, I meant concrete with vertical granite.
Oh. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So type... But let's confirm. We should confirm that.
And then also, when we talked about conditioning it so that construction vehicles aren't going up and down the street during school bus stop times, remember we have elementary, middle, and high school kids all probably at that same bus stop.
Okay.
So we'll have to make sure we cover all of them.
So Batumines or concrete?
My discussion with the engineering folks said vertical grant with Batumines. I think, and we haven't talked to the client, but I think we can certainly convince him to use concrete if that was the...
That's the town standard now.
Yeah. I mean, that's a huge amount aside from their... All their front end, 336 Wilmington is a significant piece of sidewalk. Yeah, it's a significant improvement to the neighborhood.
Did we announce so the public would know when they are going to be before the Board of Health? Because that's still a big issue that's unresolved, drainage, and the Board of Health is going to be sort of taking the lead on that. So when is your meeting at the Board of Health?
We are scheduled... We got the notice... Bill and I got the notice today from the Board of Health. We are scheduled for next Tuesday, April 23 at 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
And then do you have a follow-up with ConCom scheduled yet?
No. We are scheduled to be on the Conservation Commission hearing on April 25. Depending how things go with the Board of Health, probably we will continue that, but at the present time, we're still scheduled to be on there. I don't remember the time. It was probably 7:00 or 8:00, somewhere in that range.
Right, so...
That would be Thursday, the 25th of April.
At our last meeting, there were a handful of butters that were concerned about kind of the water flow, and we had a subcommittee about it, extensive subcommittee yesterday. And the Board of Health will be speaking directly. That's why anyone who's watching should tune into the Board of Health and pay attention about ConCom if they're going to either go forward or not, but should reach out because they're... I think they would learn quite a bit from those meetings. Yeah, I think that's all I had.
All right. Oh, yes. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Hi, again, for the record, Michael Murray. My parents live at 340 Cambridge Street, which is a direct abutter to the rear of the lot. Last time they were here, I had raised concerns about the buffer area to the residential, so maybe Frank could go over where that buffer lies and what kind of landscaping they have in there, see.
And I do want to apologize. When I said yes, it was all set, the 336, I was remembering the extensive research these guys did for this site. So I think 336 is pretty much all set, almost all set, but I just want to give credit where credit's due, is these guys did a lot of research on that.
The letter submitted.
I'll get your copy.
Could you go on the microphone, please?
There was a letter submitted to our office in hard copy. I was just looking for it in my email, actually, to send it to Mike or Michael because he mentioned it, but it is on our website. So if you go to planning, his letter's right there on this project.
So what we did early on in the process, because there was questions about where the lot line is, again, there's two lots. The 328 lot is this long lot here. It's relatively simple to know if this is the front and that's the rear. The more complicated lot is this lot that goes all over the place, and just maybe to answer Bill's question, that existing little building back here, that will be taken down by this project, so it won't be there after this project is constructed. We went and talked with John Clancy, looked at that. We have a graphic that we submitted to John Clancy that he reviewed just before he left and indicated that, in fact, if we were to combine the lots, this would be the rear lot line to this point. And when we went through, this is a regular shaped lot. We determined what the average lot width was to determine the 20% setback, and that was, I think, 42 feet, if I'm not mistaken, from this area here. So any development is set back that 20% of the average lot width in the entire thing. There is a graphic in a letter that we can get to you, or the planning staff will get to you, that explained all that and demonstrated that. Sure.
So you're saying that this is the real lot line? And so then...
The real lot line runs... It's very clear on this lot, this is very clear with the real lot line. This here was the lot line we looked at and agreed to with John Clancy was the real lot line, and that would be then the setback. And that was, I think, 42, 43 feet, I don't think right in front of me, setback. We made sure that we had any development here setback from that period.
Okay, so I see that... Well, it's not shown on this plan, but it looks like you have 42 feet from here, which is, this is my parents' property line, which extends here. So is there 42 feet from this point to any development?
No. This line here was determined to be a side lot line.
Does the bylaw say that the buffer only has to be on a rear lot line?
Yes, I mean...
It says adjoining residentially zoned property.
It's... I don't have it right in front, but I'm pretty sure it talks about from the front lot line to the back lot line, not to a side lot.
I don't believe that's accurate.
I don't think... I think Mike's right. I'm pretty sure it's abutting any residential property.
Which I would also argue includes the residential on the lot. I haven't seen the letter, so I don't know, but I don't... I wouldn't agree with that. There's also, well, again, depending on if it's the real lot line or not, but this is RO, which is on a different property. So there is a point there so that there should be a buffer around.
Again, the interpretation we got from John Clancy, going through the zoning, we did this a couple different times. You have the letter? One is that it is a difference between the front and the rear lot line. Again...
The difference... I'm sorry, can I just...
So the setback, the residential setback, is based from the front to the rear lot line. If you think about what was happened at Building 19, we did the same thing. We didn't go along the edge off of Northeast Ave and some of the other roads there. We went from the very rear lot line, and that was a 20% lot depth.
So 20% of the average depth of the lot measured perpendicular from the common lot boundary line, but not less than 10 feet and not more than 100. Not less than 75% shall be landscaped or wooded left in a natural state. So what you're saying is John has interpreted the 20% of the average depth, depth being front to back?
Yes.
Not any direction.
I think if you look at the lot depth, that definition, I don't believe you remember, but I thought the definition of the lot depth talked about the front to the back.
That's how you determine the dimension of it, but then you apply that dimension for the sides.
To all sides.
Again, that's not what I'm seeing. Certainly, even on the previous, the middles, the board approved of the site, the setback was back over here. We went through it to be conservative and looked at this area as a rear lot line.
So the 21218 lot depth, the mean horizontal distance between the front lot line and the rear lot line?
That's... And that's what we used and went over that with Mr. Clancy.
I hadn't done that in the residential.
It's side front and back.
I know, even with the overlay, that's why, even with the overlay, it should have been on all sides. It shouldn't have been on this front and back.
Well, no, but it's not saying... It's not saying you don't have the buffer on the side. It's just saying the buffer amount.
Right.
But then that amount is applied to all the sides, and what Mike is pointing out is that it's not here.
Well, right. So the residential buffer is from his parents' lot. The 336 house is in an IG property, so you wouldn't have it right behind the IG property, but you would have it from...
It says... You wouldn't apply it to your own land. It says abutting...
The zone line that goes in here.
It doesn't say abutting land. It says abutting residentially zoned property.
That's exactly right.
Oh, you don't... No, no. But John has determined in the past that you don't do a buffer in a split lot property.
I do have a letter from...
You do it from the property line itself.
But your other issue might... We should talk through. I would still potentially argue that this is a budding on another lot.
Different residence. And your parents' lot is...
My parents' lot is over here. And it looks like they're providing the buffer there. I mean, I would have questions about what the landscaping is.
Yeah, the buffer is definitely...
You know, so this, you know, if John has made... If the determination has been made that on a split lot, if that's proven, then...
If it's a split lot, it goes to the closest common boundary.
Fine, I can buy that. Then this is still a question, at least. And then, so my only other question for now would be, is what the landscaping is provided within that buffer area? I mean, it's showing a couple of trees, but there's not a lot of detail there, so if you could maybe just a little more detail on that.
I mean, again, what we're calling is basically some of the area would be left natural once we take the building down. Other areas would be grassed areas with some trees around the parking area shown here.
Can you mark it in the field?
That parking area is the reserve parking area, right?
That's correct.
So that's not actually going to be built out, Mike, in the beginning.
For now.
Eventually, perhaps, yes.
Again, the only thing similar to this other lot that we discussed, we just look... I mean, keeping a lot of it in a natural state is hard because there's a big barn right there, so when that comes down, it won't be in a natural state. So, you know, an evergreen screening there would just go a long way.
Okay.
I think that's very reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
I have a question. Was the average depth calculations done when the lots were split so you were dealing with not one large lot, but two separate lots?
No. When we sat down with Mr.... We arbitrarily, no, we purposely combined the two lots.
Okay, so for discussion, it was as if you had already done the 81X. Okay.
To maximize the setback.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak? No? Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board? Okay. I think we're going to be continuing this.
To May 2.
Well, when's the... When's the Board of Health going to meet?
They're going to meet Tuesday.
Okay, so you figure you will be ready to continue with us on May 2? All right.
I'm waiting for a motion.
Make a motion to continue these matters to the Planning Board meeting of May 2, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0. Thank you. All right. We don't have any meetings to discuss, but we do have a discussion item, the 3 Lexington Street release of lots for building purposes.
Do you want a motion?
The new member can vote on this and could read the motion.
Okay.
But I'll just... This is the property right off Lexington Street where Tom Murphy's house was. So they're just looking to release...
Lot 1 and 2?
Yes. I was just like, is it... Yeah, two lots. Two more lots to... For building purposes.
Okay. Discussion? I don't think there's... It's pretty straightforward, right? All right.
Yep.
Give me a motion, someone.
Planning Board hereby approves the release of lot in exchange for provisions of surety, authorizing the release of Lot 1 and 2 within the 3 Lexington Street definitive subdivision from the H1 Conditional Approval Agreement, Book 70885, page 90, recorded 4/18/2018 at the South Middlesex Registry of Deeds, for purposes of building construction in exchange for security to be determined by Planning Department staff. The lot will be released upon payment of all outstanding invoices and security.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
7-0. All right. Any other business?
I have a note. No, you're going to like this.
Okay.
If you looked at the front page of the paper tonight, there's a picture of a handsome man there who just received a big promotion to his bank, and his last name is LaRue.
My husband's in the paper?
Isn't it? I thought... No, it says he's in banking, isn't he?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, there's a thing. Did he receive a promotion?
What paper?
The Daily Paper.
Oh, really?
Because when... Yeah, when Jane came out, she said...
I knew he got a new job. I didn't know he was in the paper.
She says, "How many LaRues are there that look like that?" I said...
He is very handsome, isn't he?
Yeah. I'll save the paper. I'll leave you the paper tomorrow when I'm going to the mall.
Okay. I won't be there because I'm working, but save it for me.
All right.
All right. Most... Anyone want to make a motion?
Motion, Ms. Jaren? Second?
Someone seconded. You seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.